The meeting Wednesday, March 6th, we'd like to call the meeting to order. Kim, would you please call roll?
Mayor Turner.
Here.
Councilmember Spring.
Yeah.
Levers.
Yeah.
Bo Gioli.
Yeah.
And Martino Martinez Beltran.
Here.
Please declare the posting of the agenda.
Yes, tonight's meeting agenda was duly noticed and posted in accordance with government code 54954.2.
Very good, thank you. We're going to stand now and do a solemn invocation and then the Pledge of Allegiance. If you would, please join us. Amen. You'll please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite and endless. Well, thank you so much. We're going to move on to the agenda now. The first item we have is a presentation by the League of California Cities for the California Business Roundtable. Christina, would you like to introduce our speaker?
Yes, absolutely. Good evening. My name is Christina Turner, City Manager from Morgan Hill, and I am very excited to introduce Seth Miller, who is the Peninsula Legislative Director. And so, State of California is divided up into many different regions or divisions. And so Seth is our representative in this area. The League of California Cities exists to work with cities on helping us with local control. And so this evening Seth is here to talk about something that is going to be on the ballot in November, which is the California Business Roundtable, and is going to talk about some of the potential impacts that cities may face. And so with that Seth, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you so much for having me, Mayor Turner and Councilmembers.
We're going to get that mic live, make sure your presentation is live. There we go.
Thank you, Mayor Turner, Councilmembers. Nice to see you all this evening, and thank you so much for having me with your community. It's a robust place to be and driving down, I'm always impressed by the loveliness with which Morgan Hill purchased itself. It's a treat to be down here. So thanks for having me and making the time. I'm going to jump right into it with what I'm doing here. Cal Cities has been around for 125 years and it's driven by members. Can I get my present even better, even better? Excellent. Oh, thank you. We've been around for a long time and you guys have been active members in this city's own association. The thing is, there's 476 members to this association. And the truth is, we are more strong and unified when we act together. And what I'm here today to remind you that we are only as good as your level of engagement. And several of you are very involved with the league. Some of you are involved in policy committees. Whether you're involved at the present moment or not, the act of battling with the state for who has authority and who makes decisions in your community is what the League of Cities is all about. So I'm here tonight to remind you what the league stands for. These are our four principles. You all decided them. This is what members do. We focus on protecting local government's ability to make its own decisions. Now, there's a few ways we do this. You know, there's over 3,000 bills that have been presented in Sacramento this year. 3,000 different bills, specific issues. There's the Supreme Court and the judicial branch that makes decisions as well. And there's the ballot box. And tonight I'm going to go after what's going to be, not the March ballot that we just had yesterday, but what's on the November ballot. And there's 11 measures that have been approved. And I'm not going to go into each one of them. They have varying levels of importance. One that we're going to talk about tonight, you've already tackled it a bit. It's called the Taxpayer Protection Act. And it sounds really good, and we're going to get into what's really behind it. And I'm going to try to do it in five minutes or less as your city manager has directed. Now, the way you look at these measures, especially those of us that are in the business, you look to who's behind it and where the money is sponsoring this thing. And the California Business Roundtable, who's a reputable organization, they're the ones who are on the ballot. And the way they do it is they do a lot of polling and they come up with phrases like taxes, increased taxes, property taxes, and they bring a lot of fear to voters about what's going to happen if and when their measure isn't passed. Now, we look at the measure and if it passes, this idea being all and every decision made about taxes and fees has to be passed a two-thirds majority versus just a simple majority, that's the crux of what this measure does. Our analysis is that the local government gets burdened with an additional $20 billion for the next 10 years. And hundreds of millions of dollars of revenues that you guys decide on your own with your own fee schedule, with your own process are now at risk. So I don't think Morgan Hill passed a measure since 2022. There are a lot of cities that have, and one of the insidious parts of this measure is if you pass something since '22, it gets to be revoted on and brought to taxpayers again in 2025. The whole idea is that they want to change the constitution in a way that makes any time there's a vote, it has to be at the supermajority level. So we'll get into what definitions are of fees and taxes, you know, closer to the election day. But the action that I want to get to with you guys here tonight is, you know, when you do your fee schedule, when you determine how you're going to charge to rent a facility, or you're going to charge for, charge to, you know, a jail booking fee or building permit fees, any of these things that you decide and spend energy on would now be open to interpretation and legal challenge if this measure is to pass. So another way to look at this is who's opposing it. And in addition to the California League of Cities, there's the Special Districts Association, there's the Association of Teachers, the California Alliance for Jobs. And these are the folks that keep the lights on, keeps the roads clean, and keeps our utilities moving. Now, this is a list we put, it's gotten to the media level already. The league sent out a letter identifying members of the California Business Roundtable that are paying for this. And I don't even think many of these companies know that they're behind this. If you go to 7-Eleven and ask them, did you, do you want this measure to threaten local revenues? I'm not convinced they would even have an answer. What's important is that cities like Morgan Hill got behind this early. And you've taken an action item, which is impressive. And the next thing is to grow the list of elected officials in opposition. There's a barcode that you can go to, a website to visit, and we want your names. We want you to stand up and say, this is something increasing our voter threshold, making it more difficult for us to manage our own finances is not the direction we want to go. We want to be in charge of our own destiny. And with that, we'll get to the activities that we have planned for the division. There's ways for you to get involved. Come to Sacramento, join other city leaders, come to our Division of Events, meet some local legislators, participate in a fun event in San Jose in June. Mark your calendars. I know I flood your emails, especially your city manager's email account with information. But the more you're involved, the more this organization reflects you. And with that, I'm open to any questions and welcome comments.
Well, that was right at 4 minutes and 58 seconds. You did well. Any questions for Seth? There being none. Seth, thank you so much for being with us tonight and presenting that information. We appreciate all that you do at the level you're working.
My pleasure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we will now move on to, we have some recognitions. We're going to be recognizing the 2023 STEM winner. And we have a couple of things, we're going to be doing some proclamation, so I'll come down and grab a microphone. All right, this, the, I'm sorry, it said 2023. It's actually March 2024, City Council. This is for the, yeah, 2023 STEM winner. I want to, is she here tonight? I want to make sure I do pronounce her name properly. Maybe she's not here, but if not, Jo, please come on up. I want to make sure to pronounce your name properly. Forgive me if I mess this up. Is it Sharanya?
Sharanya.
Sharanya?
Chica. Good job.
Thank you so much. My stones. The Morgan Hill City Council recognizes and applauds Sharanya for her accomplishments of 2023 STEM winner in the Synopses Championship for her science fair project Solar Tracking Litter Minator.
Yes.
Tell us what that is.
So actually, my project was building an autonomous trash collecting robot powered by a sun-tracking solar panel. And the robot also sorts the trash that it collects into different categories, trash and recycle. Yeah.
Are your parents, they want to get a picture of you receiving this with anybody here to capture a photo?
My dad is right there.
Did you get the photo? Here, here we go.
You want to be in the picture now. Everybody's in the photo.
And can we ask Carlos to come up as well? Of course, for representing the STEM winners. Yeah. He usually likes to say a word or two.
Finally meet you. Yeah, thank you. Thank you so much. Yeah, thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you.
I'm with the Santa Clara Valley Science and Engineering Fair Association. And Morgan Hill has a history of producing these kind of individuals. And in fact, a couple of our students have provided awards that actually can be used in the city. I think one dealt with the traffic light, improvement in the traffic lights. So we try to inspire, dedicate, tell them what types of science and engineering projects that they should do because they are the future. And we can shape the future today by encouraging our students to excel in all of the adventures or challenges that they have to come face, and they'll solve some of our problems for us. We have passed the time. We've given them all the problems, and now they've got to solve them. So let's encourage them to continue the work they're doing in terms of their challenges and their rewards. And I know you had some heartaches too, you know, it just wouldn't work the right time, so you had to keep after it after it. And if all of you know, there's nothing in the world that we use that hasn't had the engineering touch. If you go out of that door, an engineer has touched that door. If you drive your car, which we love, and we talk on our phones, oh, we love those things. The engineer has been involved with that. So they changed the world. And so we are looking forward to you to change the world and make a difference and hopefully make it better. Thank you very much.
Okay, who's taking the picture? Try to get one. You know, the, had we known what you had designed and built, we'd have had you bring it and we'd have done some demonstration tonight, but maybe for another time. Thank you. Congratulations. Thank you so much. Appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you. Appreciate it.
I could, can I say a few words?
Of course you can. Yes.
Thank you. All right. Good evening, everyone. I just wanted to really express my gratitude to the city of Morgan Hill and the city council for this, for this great honor. And I think it really inspires all sorts of young teenagers like me who want to become someone in the STEM field. So I think it's a really good opportunity and it's a really great honor, and I'm very grateful to have this. Now, I actually got the idea for my project from this very city. When we moved here in 2017, my dad and I, we would volunteer at city trash cleanups on Saturday, which was a totally new concept to me. And Morgan Hill really gave me the idea for my project, which was not only the project of the year in the State Division, but was also recognized as one of the top 30 in the nation. And I'm actually really grateful for this city for everything that's done for me. I remember I was here last year when I was in seventh grade, and I was recognized for my seventh grade project. And that really inspired me and pushed me to challenge myself to reach my full potential. And I think that's what really helped me achieve what I have today. So a big thank you for the city council members for this great opportunity. And thank you once again for this honor. Thank you.
Nicely said. Thank you so much. We want to do a proclamation. We're proclaiming March 31st, 2024 is Cesar Chavez Day. Morgan Hill is proud to honor Cesar Chavez, civil rights, Latino community, and farm labor leader, a religious and spiritual figure, a community organizer and social entrepreneur, a champion of nonviolent social change, and a crusader for the environment and consumer rights. Cesar Chavez was a first-generation American-born, March, born March 31st, 1927 in Arizona, a migrant farm worker at age 11, and a U.S. Navy soldier from 1946 to 1948. Cesar Chavez realized his dream to help farm workers organize into an influential union and a nationwide movement with help from his family and fellow activists, establishing the first credit union for farm workers as well as health clinics, daycare centers, job training programs, housing, and other essential services. City of Morgan Hill recognizes and celebrates the contributions that Cesar Chavez and his, and his family and friends have made to generations of our citizens through his tireless advocacy for farm workers' rights and civil rights for underrepresented people. Next, we're proclaiming the month of March as Women's History Month. In 1987, after being petitioned by the National Women's History Project, the United States Congress officially designated the month of March as National Women's History Month to recognize the contributions women have made to history. Over half our residents being women, many of whom are leaders, mothers, and trailblazers, women have made our Morgan Hill community a stronger, more vibrant, and better place to live. Women have played and continue to play critical economic, cultural, and social roles in every sphere of life by constituting a significant portion of their labor force working inside and outside the home. Women have been leaders not only in securing their own rights of suffrage and equal opportunity, but also in the social movements, which create a more fair and just society for all. Women's Month commemorates the history of women's impact on the world and raises awareness of issues women are facing worldwide. Actually, we're proclaiming the month, the month of March as Youth Arts Month. And it's Sophia here. Sophia's going to be, we have someone named Sophia. Is it Fojas? Very good. Sophia, thank you. Come on up and I'll read this and present this to you. City of Morgan Hill is committed to supporting the arts to inspire and prepare youth for success in the 21st century and allowing them to develop as productive, contributing members of a strong community. Inspiration is a, count, did I do it? All right. Man, I was starting to sweat on that one. Inspiration is a county-wide arts education initiative focused on professional development, student engagement, advocacy, and communication. And studies have proven that arts learning strategies and arts integration help teachers to recognize and build upon critical thinking, skills, curiosity, flexibility, communication, innovation, and collaboration, and are the traits required for post-secondary and workplace success. And each March, youth arts is celebrated in local schools, school districts, community arts organizations, and larger communities. So with that, if you'd like to say a few words?
Yes, I would. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Turner, and the Morgans, Morgan Hill City Council members for your support of arts education in our schools by presenting the Youth Arts Month proclamation tonight. My name is Sophia Fojas. I'm the Arts Coordinator of the Santa Clara County Office of Education's Arts Education Initiative called Artspiration, which began in 2007. I support districts implementing a comprehensive arts education, co-manage the Arts Ed Connect Grant to teachers with SV Creates, and conduct the Young Artist Showcase, which houses the largest collection of youth arts of any county office in the state. Youth Arts Month began in 1961 by the National Arts Education Association to again recognize the arts as a critical part of a well-rounded child's education with the encouragement and commitment to the arts by students, community organizations, businesses, government agencies, and individuals. That was the goal of the initiative. Now in 2024, research shows us the ways that arts participation develops a path to creative self-expression, instills a sense of belonging, prepares students for a 21st century workplace, and connects families and communities to rich cultural experiences. The positive effects of arts participation in schools are reflected in higher rates of attendance, higher academic achievement, greater confidence, and, believe it or not, higher civic engagement. We need what the arts and creativity bring now more than ever for every child and every educator in our schools. Coming up on April 4th is our second annual Viva Mariachi showcase at the Mexican Heritage Plaza at the School of Arts and Culture, a celebration of Mexican music and dance with guests, special guests from Clark County School District, Mariachi Los Gavilanis from Monaco Middle School. And on May 16th, we are celebrating arts with the theme "The Arts Are Culture" for our Young Artist Showcase, a celebration we've held since 1997. On behalf of the Santa Clara County Office of Education, and as a child myself who learned violin in the public schools and then went on to become a public school teacher in music, I want to thank you for recognizing March as Youth Arts Month in Morgan Hill.
Okay. Got anybody to take a picture?
Oh, actually I don't. I know.
Okay, we are now going to move to city council reports, and this, this month we are going to see Councilmember Martinez Beltran.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everybody. I would like to share with you that on the 28th, I'm on the League of City. I serve on their Latino Caucus, on their executive board, and we held our membership meeting. It's a webinar that we do online for all Latino elected council members and mayors throughout the state of California. And that was great. We had a chance to talk with Assemblymember David Alvarez from San Diego and heard from him. And then I had an executive committee meeting for Silicon Valley Clean Energy. We, well, many of us went, not all of us, but we went to the joint venture Silicon Valley, I know, State of the Valley. And if you haven't seen this video, I know that we're having a problem with it. I don't know if it's up, but it's fantastic. It gives all kinds of data points. I look forward to it every year. This is my eighth year going. I really enjoy it. I would definitely recommend that you take a look at that and gives kind of a story of the city. And then I also wanted to share that we'll have our CBRT event. It's going to be on May 22nd for all of my colleagues, and that's going to be by the division. We just heard from Seth, planning that event to talk about CBRT in some more detail. And I would like to wish everybody a happy Cesar Chavez Day as well as Women's History Month, both very close to my heart. I'm going to read you something that my sister sent to me for all the women and men with daughters, sisters, and mothers, and moms. To the women who are aggressive, keep being assertive. To the women who are bossy, keep on leading. To the women who are difficult, keep telling the truth. To the women who are too much, keep taking up space. To the women who are intimidating and asking hard questions. And then I would also like to share that I have been, as you are all here tonight, I have been spending much of my time on these two Judd end ups that we'll be talking about today. I had deep, meaningful conversations with a diverse cross-section of community members from all perspectives, including leaders from our Jewish temples, a mosque, interfaith churches, schools, communities, business and community members. Thank you so much.
Councilmember, you had mentioned, ladies and gentlemen, we're going to ask again, like we did last time, a whole applause so that we can get through the meeting and be efficient and respectful of everyone. You had mentioned the joint venture Silicon Valley and said go to the website. Do you have the website address? You can just, is it an easy address?
I do not know it.
I can Google.
I overheard it. We were having a conversation at the table and I, for some reason.
They could Google if they were interested in. Yep, okay, very good. Thank you. City managers report. Christina.
Good evening. A few items to update everyone. The first is an exciting announcement, and that is to announce that our Assistant City Manager, Edith Ramirez, is the recipient of the 2024 Latinx Business Leadership Award. Those awards profile outstanding Latinx business leaders for their professional developments, achievements, mentorship, and community contributions. Also honored are local companies that have model policies, practices, and programs that promote diversity, creating opportunities and pathways to develop Latinx leaders. To help us celebrate her recognition, the Economic Development Team is using this opportunity to highlight the many amazing Hispanic-owned businesses and Latinx employees in Morgan Hill. If a business owner would like to recognize a local Latinx business leader at your company, please contact either Brittany Sherman or Matt Mayhood, and their information is on our website. And I just would ask Edith to stand, and I would like everyone to congratulate her on this amazing award. Congratulations, Assistant Mayor. All right, switching gears, who is ready for warmer weather and summer activities? On Friday, March 22nd, the Summer Recreation Guide will be posted on the city website. And on April 2nd, we'll have our new online registration system that will be active, and summer activities and rental options will be viewable online. On April 9th, we start registration for our summer camps and programs, and on the 11th for our swim classes. Since our team is implementing this new software, we encourage residents to plan ahead and register early for our summer programs. All of this information is available on the Parks and Decorations section of the city website. Two additional items. Next Wednesday, so a week from today, March 13th at 6:30 at the Community Playhouse will be the mayor's State of the City address. And then lastly, March 31st, mark your calendars, it's the opening game for our Panthers at the SAP Center. And this happens to be Easter Sunday. Now, our Panthers, some of you might not know about the Panthers, but they are an indoor football team, and they play at the big SAP Center in San Jose. Last year, I believe, was their first season, and so we were successful in helping convince them to continue to stay in this area in San Jose. They make Morgan Hill their home, and they practice at our outdoor sports center. So it's really exciting for our city to have them in Morgan Hill, and so let's support them on March 31st at their first home game there. And with that, I conclude my report.
Thank you. They were also, the Barry Panthers were the national champions last year as well. So we have a championship team here in Morgan Hill. Thank you for that, Christina, and that would go to the city attorney. Thank you, Mayor. I have no report tonight. All right, very good. Thank you. Any other reports? There being none, we'll move to public comment. This opportunity for public comment is for items that are not on the agenda. If you'd like to make comments on an item that is on the agenda, please wait until, until we get to that item to offer your comments. Members of the public are entitled to address the city council concerning any item within the Morgan Hill City Council's subject matter jurisdiction. The comments are limited to no more than three minutes. Tonight will be a little bit different with the number of people that we have here. Of course, you'll, if you're talking on an item, you won't be speaking during this period of time. Except for certain specific exceptions, the city council is prohibited from discussing or taking action on any item not appearing on the posted agenda. Public comment is intended for your comments. Questions posed during the public comment are not generally answered. If you have questions, please send them to thecityclerk@ccpubliccomment@morganhill.ca.gov to receive a response. Do you have any public comments?
I do have Eric, who would like to speak.
Eric, if you want to come over.
You're all set right here.
Oh, yeah. My name is Eric Gould. I live on Monterey and Tena, Tena. And they're having, they're, what they're doing right now is they're, they're building a new complex, okay? And it's, there has been problems with that because of plumbing into our 60-year-old plumbing over there. And at 8:30 at night, and our housing that, what I live in, has been having plumbing problems and everything. It's been terrible. And why aren't they doing it at 8 o'clock at 8:30 at night? And I, the only reason I know that because I was coming home. And, and I seen them out there. They were just digging and. And, uh, and I seen them out there. They were just digging and, and everything else. And next thing I know, my, I mean, my house is going crazy. And, uh, you know, I thought that was illegal, but I, I don't know for sure, you know? I, I'm just wondering why. That's all.
Eric, if I could get clarification from you real quickly, you said the project is at Monterey and Tenet?
Monterey and, I, Monterey and, uh, uh, Tenet, yeah. I mean, yeah, no, Monterey and, uh, Burnett, sorry. I live on Burnett. I'm sorry. I'm a little nervous. I've never done this before.
Hey, that's good. You're fine. Not a problem. No, I'm gonna get, just want to make sure, I want to make sure that we can do some follow-up to find out why work is occurring at those late hours for you.
I mean, I was on the rental commission for a while, but, uh, and everything, but you know, it's why at eight thirty at night out there bringing in and putting into our plumbing, then after that several, how several houses, which are called mobile homes. And, uh, you know, they're, 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 our plumings are, you know, really important to us, you know, we're.
Yeah, we agree with you.
And when you go into sixty-year-old plumbing, it's kind of bad.
You're right, Eric. Can you do some follow-up on that and find out why work is occurring that late at night? Thank you for your comments.
Okay, thank you.
Glad you're here. Thank you so much. Any other public comments?
No, no for the public comment.
Oh, very good. Before we adopt the agenda, I would like to ask the council to, um, consider moving, uh, item eight point one to follow the consent calendar. So we can move that up and the votes here can, uh, sort of waiting, making them all wait till the end. We'd move them forward. Councilmember.
Mayor, I actually was going to request that we, um, switch and put item two in front of one. Uh, because I think it's important that everybody hear about the public remote access, which we'll be talking about after item one, which is item two. So I wanted to ask to move the order, uh, and move item two in front of one.
Well, we're going to leave it in the order that it's in.
Wouldn't we vote on that?
Yeah, if you want to make that as a motion.
Yeah, I'd like to move to see if we can move, if we can move the item number, what is it, eight point two, which is discussing public comment over Zoom remote access to go ahead of talking about the, um, sustainable peace document, petri-gent item, which would be eight point one now. So I want to switch.
You want a second? I'll second that. Go in favor? Opposed? Opposed. Opposed. All right. We didn't hear, what is yours? We're moving, okay, very good. Okay, uh, so that will occur, we're going to, however, though, my, my, what I'm wanting to do is move item eight point one and only eight point one after the consent calendar.
Right, but that, that's what we just voted on. I wanted to keep it where it was and move it.
The motion was to put was to, by the motion I hate, was to put eight point two ahead of eight point one, but I didn't hear a motion.
I said to reverse the order of them. That was my motion.
Was your motion also include?
She made the motion. Yeah.
It was due to also include moving it right after consent ahead of item six and seven.
And that was not included in the motion, no.
So we need a motion to do that, if that's what.
Okay, I'll make the motion to move agenda item number eight right there for the consent calendar. Second that, all in favor?
I'm sorry, I don't understand. We're putting it on the consent again?
No, no. Right after. We're moving item eight, eight point two and eight point one after.
Okay.
Okay. Go in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, very good. We'll move that item. Uh, so I need a motion to adopt the agenda. Motion to adopt. Councilmember Boris Giliv. I'll second that. Seconded by Councilmember Spring. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, very good. We will now move, uh, to item eight point two.
Consent calendar.
Oh, I'm sorry. Consent, forgive me. That, okay, so, um, before a, if there's no one looking to remove an item by the council or the public, we're moving an item from the consent counter, I'll entertain a motion. First of all, anybody looking to pull an item from the consent counter? There being none?
I have a question. Item number five consent?
Only goes up to item four.
Okay.
Yep. Motion, motion by, uh, Councilmember Borzioli?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Martinez Beltran. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? There being none, consent calendar passes. I was an aye if you didn't hear me. I did hear you. Ask if this public, anyone? Yes, yep. Um, we will now move to item eight point two.
Great. All right. So I'll give a brief report on this. Um, so item eight is to provide directional staff and propose future council initiated agenda items. And so we have underneath item eight, two separate items. Um, and so generally speaking, how this process works is it's a three-step process. And so a council member can request to have an item heard. And so at the end of the agenda, we have a specific section set up for that. So we have a council member that has asked for two separate items to come back. So tonight, we're at the second process, the second point of the process. And that is, um, the two items before you this evening are to determine whether or not the council wants to have these items agendized at a future meeting or discussion. If the majority of the council does want to move forward with one or both of these items, then we will agendize the items for a full discussion at a later date. So we have two items this evening. And so, um, the first is to consider a resolution for sustainable peace to end the war and the loss of life in Israel and Palestine. And the second item is to consider continuing the discussion on remote public comments. And the council has, um, decided to move forward, uh, with first speaking on the second one, which is consider continuing the discussion on remote public comments. And so on this particular item, this has been brought up in the past by the council and the council decided that they did want to have this agendized. It was agendized for the goal setting, which was held on February second and third of this year. And the, the council, um, did not take any action at that meeting. It was a two-two, um, vote. And so council member requested that this return to the council for consideration to see if the council wants to reopen that discussion on whether or not to allow remote public comments. And so remote public comments have been, um, allowed in the past. And so with, um, one meeting that we had, um, several comments, um, from the public that were just um, very inappropriate, we determined that it was best to not have remote public comments. And so we are returning to find out if the council wants to recommence having remote public comments.
Good. Thank you, Christina. Uh, since Councilmember Martinez Beltran, uh, submitted this, uh, we will allow her to now speak and make a case for, um, moving this to the next step.
Right. So, um, this was already, already went through this whole process. And when we spoke at the, um, workshop, I think it was on the second of February. The understanding was that our council member Libras was not here. It was a tie. And so we couldn't move forward. It was two to two. We needed that fifth vote. So the understanding was that we would come back and discuss it, not that we would go through the whole process again. Um, and so a little confused as to why we're voting again. We shouldn't be voting. We should just be hearing it on the next agenda. I'm sure everybody has access to the video that, when we had that discussion.
There was no video. Was there? Did we videotape the?
There was audio, I think, right? It was live streamed to Facebook.
Okay. Well, what we ended up settling on was that, uh, you would need to submit a paragraph again and go through the whole process.
The understanding was that I would resubmit you and you wanted me to resubmit it. And so I said I would. I asked not to, but you wanted me to resubmit it. So I did resubmit it. But there's no reason we should vote on it again because we had already voted to hear it, but we weren't able to take a vote. Correct on?
I, yeah, but it wasn't on as an action item at the goal setting because there was no action item, but it was on to determine whether there was further discussion. So I think probably the best way to move forward is
To have discussion.
Have, have, well, to have council decide if they want further discussion. It's not on the agenda tonight for action either. So there's nothing, so.
Right. No, I understand. We can't discuss it tonight and that's fine, but I don't understand why we're voting on something that we weren't able to.
Well, we, we're going to spend a lot of time trying to sort through all of this. I think what we need to move on is, if you would like to make a case to the council.
Sure. I guess the case would be the same, um, the last time that we determined to go ahead and have that discussion. So I would be surprised to see if there was any difference, but you know, that it would be the same case, I guess.
Very good. Uh, but I think, what I think we need to do is, to public comment, so if there's anyone who wants to speak on this item, if not, we'll close the public comment and then decide whether or not we want to go forward. So.
Who we got?
It's a little bit different. So I think, I think more importantly, let's, let's hear what the public has to say if they have some comments on this. Do you have anybody wishing to speak on this item?
I have no speakers. Can we get some type of a staff report so that the public understands what we're discussing? We know what we're discussing, but I'm.
This isn't the time to do a staff report. You're asking, uh, this is about you making a case, we'll do the rest of the council to decide if we want to go forward to step three.
Okay, so then could somebody, I'm happy to do it, explain to the chamber that's full of residents here, what it is that they would be getting public comment on?
We're now going to move on to find out, first of all, does the council want to move forward with this item to step three? And if we, if we hear say, no, we don't want to have any more presentations about public comment, it ends here tonight.
Mayor, wouldn't we go to public comment before we decide?
We just did. And there was no public comment. We.
Tell us how, what we need to do before the comment.
I asked the city clerk if there was any public comment.
This is on, um, Zoom, Zoom public comment. This is, this is not the, um, ceasefire resolution.
Comments about that too.
About the Zoom.
Be able to make public comments on to, she didn't speak on, maybe.
Okay, cheers. Okay, um, Mayor, I think it would be a good.
Councilmember, please, if you would hold your, hold your comments for just right now. We're, we're going to figure this out. I would ask the city clerk, I'm okay with having public comment, but when we asked and there was no, no one signed up or no, no list. So a public comment, we'll, we'll take public comment on this.
Nobody understands what they're supposed to comment on, Mayor.
That starts the thing.
Don't help me out. In this situation, typically what we do is, yeah, that we go to public comment. So, um.
Yeah, the, the, the comment is on whether or not to agendize being Zoom public comment back.
Right. Whether or not the public would want to have access to remote access to a council meeting. And if they would, then they could make a public comment.
Yes, that's what they're doing now.
I'm just asking if we could state that without, you know, just clearly state that what we're discussing now, there is no more public access. And if people are interested in having public access or not interested in having public access, that now would be the time for them to get a green card and make a public comment.
You need is remote public comment. And so we do have, if anybody's interested, they can have the green card and we will start, I'm with you.
A service to the community to allow us to make public comments remotely. Because right now we are very busy with lots of meetings across the Bay Area where we need to provide public comments. We cannot drive all over the place all the time. So we need the ability to make our comments via Zoom. So I completely support the proposition from, uh, Councilwoman, uh, Yvonne.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Here we have one more speaker, Bacheva.
Right ahead.
I, I think that we should not have a public comment during Zoom. We don't want this meeting or this resolution at all. We, I'm so dislaid at the time and she cannot even propose the laser resolution and we can all see a fish with our agreements. This, all files that we are fighting against each other should be prevented. If the care company, care organization will stop going from one city to another and ask for a solution, which provide us.
Okay, thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor, um, council members, we're, we're all busy. We all have jobs and family to take care of. And we need to be able to make public comment during Zoom meetings. It's like the, that's the basic.
Good, thank you.
Thank you.
There's another gentleman before you though, so.
And Mayor, if I may, I just want to apologize. We have a large crowd and for an item, we knew we had a lot of speakers. We did a sign-up list. So, so everybody understands if you want to speak on any item other than eight point one, there are green speaker cards at the table and there are pens with flowers and that is how you request to speak. So I do apologize for the confusion.
Councilmembers, I also object to bring it to the discussions with Zoom. Again, you, not only wasting our time, you're wasting your time as well. And having Zoom, it's just going to make everyone easier to speak, but also kind of, uh, looking through, uh, going from one city to another. Do you want anyone from outside the country just to join, uh, your meeting? That's going to bring the Zoom. Outside the country, not, I mean, also going to join your Zoom meeting all over the world. Hmm. But that's, that's, that's what you're going to, you're going to happen if you're going to open to the public. Just local residents or local people come over here and that's very hard to come over here from one city to another. And that's what she, she, this lady said, it's very hard to come. But if, if it is important to her, she will come. If it's important to all of the people that came over here, they will come. If not, they will not come.
Very good. Thank you.
Uh, good afternoon, councilmembers. Armando Benavides. I do, uh, support bringing, bringing this item back for consideration. Uh, we learned through COVID, Zoom is a powerful tool to engage, to involve the community. And certainly, uh, I really enjoyed being able to, uh, be at home and read the, and hear the discussion taking place. And I do, uh, enjoy also getting on Zoom. And if I'm at home, it's, uh, late in the afternoon, you guys already are talking about a subject that I may be interested in. And I think it's very helpful for me to get on Zoom if I, if I'm able to and express my opinion. And I really believe that, uh, a group of individuals who are, um, a red apple are really ruined it for us, for our community, uh, because, oh, so it's all of their actions. Um, the community now has more limitations than in, than even before we spoke. So I would hope that, uh, you would consider, uh, moving back for discussions so the community certainly could have a, a, a chance of, of persuading you all to uh, bring this issue back, uh, to reconsider it. I believe that, uh, our community is better off when we participate in government. And one of the things that we do know is that Zoom is a really, really powerful tool and it, it's the best way to engage the community. There's just no way to, that we should let, let us, our people, bad apples, uh, take away the ability for our community to so engage and still powerfully engage. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you.
Good evening. I am in support of continuing with a Zoom possibility for people who cannot make it to the meetings. But also it really keeps the population, the citizens informed of what's going on in the city. So I'm, I'm sorry that you had probably been smacked with some garbage, but that's really should not penalize people who are not able to physically be at the meetings. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Art Cohen and, um, I'm also for, uh, including Zoom. I think we as a community want to be inclusive. We want people to participate. Right? I mean, we only had about what seventeen percent of the people or so vote. So we want more people to vote, more people to be included. And Zoom gives people that advantage. And I think that's very important. Um, what happened where someone, uh, we, we should put in place tools, which you can do with Zoom, where somebody is selling hate speech. You can turn them off. And I think we should have rules in regards to that. Um, but we shouldn't shut off the whole system to allow people who can't make it. But frankly, most of the time I cannot make it to these meetings. So I, but, uh, I think it's very important that we continue the Zoom. And we certainly should have the discussion uh, at the next meeting with bars to the Zoom. Uh, one, one maybe point of order is that when you you said earlier that, that there was no, uh, you asked for public discussion, but that was for non-agenda items. At least that's how I heard it. That, that was my perception. Not for agenda items. And this isn't agenda items. So I thought this would be an opportunity.
I appreciate that. Now, we were a little clear. We did have two different, uh, asks for public comment. But thank you. Appreciate your comments.
We are the last one to comment on this because we're sort of defending the first. So with regards to agenda item number eight, I support the idea of not opening it to Zoom because we have enough people here. So with regards to agenda item number eight, I support the idea of not opening it to Zoom because we have enough people here. And the, the idea is to limit the, the discussions. As a matter of fact, this whole thing happening around the country is because of that particular group that is asked for all of those resolutions, and then now is asking to open it for Zoom. So I, I would say enough people are here, and let's keep the discussion focused. Thank you.
Very good, thank you. Any other comments?
I do have two, um, and.
I just wanted to add, so if you want to think about diversity, you want to think about inclusion, it's important to acknowledge that you're facilitating, only allowing able-bodied people to enter this chamber. There are a lot of people with disabilities who would like to have a say. It's not think about giving people access to use their voice because we want to limit their voice on one specific issue. And that's what I'm hearing in regards to people who are speaking out against Zoom. We're talking about access repeatedly to our public servants to provide opinion on things that impact this constituent base. That is unacceptable that you are trying to claim that you're a diverse town when the reality is the people in this room had to take a lot of sacrifice to be here. There are a lot of people who live in Morgan Hill but do not work in Morgan Hill. They, uh, go to Silicon Valley every single day. They have children to pick up from school. Some people have to look after elderly parents and cannot be here. Some people cannot physically be here, so it's unacceptable to prevent access to our democracy simply because you're concerned about some bad apples every now and then. So that's my public comment. Please do the right thing. Allow people to use their voices. Just because people don't want to have a dialogue on one specific topic today, doesn't mean you should ban access for the future. Thank you.
And real quickly, again, ladies and gentlemen, we're going to ask, in order to, uh, let's, let's.
Hold the applause down.
And I'm going to address the fact that there is, there is a, uh, uh, for those who are disabled, there is access.
Yeah, uh, uh, anybody who has, um, a, a disability that would prevent them from physically being able to be in chambers can, um, call the city clerk's office. The number is on our agendas, seventy-two hours in advance of the meeting, and we will make reasonable accommodations.
Again, ladies and gentlemen, please. Listen, again, we're asking you, we, we are asking, it doesn't matter what side of the issue you are for or against, we're asking you to hold the applause and let us get through this with great efficiency. And we don't want to create this us against them mentality here in the, in the chambers. We really would appreciate that. Thank you so much. One more, Rita, okay, very good.
I just wanted to speak, uh, because I did attend a city council meeting, not in this city, but in another town, where they did allow Zoom. And all of a sudden, we had residents from, um, San Mateo, Oakland, Alameda, speaking on an issue that really dealt with the residents of the town, oh, it was Gilway, and we had all these other people talking, and it took, it was forty-five minutes eventually to get all the other people because they were calling in by Zoom and wanted to be heard. And I think as a city council, your job is to deal with the residents of Morgan Hill or the community that are affected by what you do. The residents of Morgan Hill specifically, or your groups within your city, uh, city limits. So, thank you.
Thank you. And then we will close the public comment and bring it back here for conversation.
Ma- Mayor, uh, perhaps it might be a good idea to, um, say why we shut down Zoom? Because I, I am sure that ninety-five percent of the people here don't understand why we actually shut down Zoom.
Christina did explain that. She explained the fact that we had received the, the phone calls and.
The anti-Semitic hate speech.
Yes.
Anti-LBG, like TQ.
Yep.
And there were, um, high school kids in the audience.
Whether, whether high school or not, it was explained that, that those were the comments that were being made. So that's the reason why we shut it down. Correct, that is correct, yep. Listen, we're, we're not going to have conversations at this point with the, uh, public comment is now over. Councilmember Lubers?
Mayor, sit there.
Sorry, 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 sorry. Can you hear me now?
Yep.
Okay, good. Um, since I was the one that was absent when we did have this conversation before, I would like to have it come back as an agendized item. I support my colleague in having this come back, so.
Okay, with that, I think we do have, there's probably interest on your part to have it come back. I mean, you can make comments, you can make as many as you want, but, okay, go right ahead.
Thank you, appreciate that. Yeah, I was one of the two that, uh, with my colleague, Martinez Beltran, that, that thought we should continue discussions on how we best can do that. But as an LGBTQ, uh, uh, member on this council, I, I am often exposed to hate speech, and our house gets sprayed and all that, but we deal with it, right? But for me, it's much more important, you know, that we hear, hear of the moms and pops of the world that indeed, like me, I have a job up in Silicon Valley and, and can't always just run down to a meeting. Of course, the focus has to be, uh, uh, the business of the city of Morgan Hill. Let's make that very clear. Uh, uh, and, and unfortunately, we cannot turn off, right? Uh, anyone of you during the time you speak, you can say whatever you want. It's a First Amendment thing, and, 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 and that is tough sometimes to hear, and when it's, especially when it's misused. Uh, I, I do think, as I had mentioned during the workshop, uh, we should look into, uh, technical means to, to what else can we do? But not the first city dealing with it. Uh, I, I work for a technology company. There have to be ways to, to address these kinds of issues. Uh, all of us have worked, that Zoom bombed, uh, you know, one way or another at some point over the past few years. Uh, so it's not unique to the council. Uh, I, I, you know, what's more important is just having to listen to those ugly hate speeches or, or, uh, be, be having more residents speaking up on, on an item that is important to them, and they cannot make it on time. Uh, so the latter is more important to me personally. So yes, I'd like to bring that back and see what are our options, right?
Well, and thank you for that. I know that, uh, when it comes to hate speech, we typically have a gentleman who shows up at almost every meeting, spewing ugly hate speech. So we know what that's like. They can do it in person. They can do it over the phone. Uh, I do think though that, um, uh, we do have concerns about, again, so many others from outside the community, again, which is, it's, they have the right to do that because it is public comment. Um, I think though, uh, council member, you're saying you're open to coming, having them come back and have a presentation?
And Mayor, I just want to caution, it's not on the agenda for substantive discussion. It's just rather put on the agenda, so.
Okay, so we just need to find out, is that something we want to go ahead and bring back? It sounds like we have a majority to do that. And so, council member, Martinez Beltran?
Thank you. I'd just like to make my comments.
Please, if you would.
Thank you. Um, so I think that, but yes, I think it's a great idea if we do bring this back. I, this is why I put it on the council on the, uh, future agenda item request. I think it does enhance participation. I have three young children, and it is very difficult for me to get here. And I know that this is planned into my schedule. I can only imagine for everybody else. Um, I want to say, yes, it does, people are able to get access that aren't in this community, but also when you travel, you're able to have access. When you're sick, you're able to have access. If there's any kind of informational item, as tonight, so many of you are here, if you were not able to be here in person, you would have that opportunity. And I'll note that we as council members and as city staff enjoy that privilege. And, um, I just would like to see the public also enjoy that. You know, I, I realize, and it, it was actually a really horrible night when that happened. Uh, but none of us on this dais are able to suppress, uh, the, the public's comments, nor should we. And so I think it's a great way for us to increase the participation. People can be vile and disrespectful, both online and in person, which I will, no, we will not see tonight. Um, and so, uh, I think that we also, you know, the disability clause that we have is very limited. There's even, you, that's very limited to who gets to use that. You don't get to use that if you have a dependent. You're not able to use that. If you're working, you don't get to use that. If you're in traffic, you don't get to use that. If your child is sick, you don't get to use that. Um, so I think that we leave a whole segment out without having that ability. I think that we also, you know, rarely, rarely, I hope you know, do we have meetings like this? And so this is just, you know, once in a while we get it. This is a beautiful sight. I wish you were here every week. So I would definitely support.
And I think, again, I think you're right. When it's important to the public, it will come out. And we've received about nearly two thousand emails. So the fact is, people will find ways of communicating. I have had unending meetings with the public over this, and they have access to us personally. Uh, two times, this chamber has been packed out with people who want to come out and, and speak on this item.
Yeah, that's night. I actually had a Zoom meeting with someone who couldn't be here tonight and wanted to talk to me personally.
So it isn't as though the only way to get access is through Zoom. So with that, I think we have, we have at least a majority to say, want to bring this back for discussion with the options available through Zoom. And we're asking for no applause, no response. This, this is going to come forward at a future, a future, uh, meeting. Yeah, we're going to move to item eight point one. Christina?
Yeah, so, um, most of what my prepared remarks, I covered already, that covered both one and two, um, but this portion of it is to determine whether or not the council wants to consider a discussion on a resolution for sustainable peace and the war and the loss of life in Israel and Palestine. And this was requested by council member Martinez, uh, Beltran. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, uh, City Manager. Uh, again, I would like to make sure that everyone here understands tonight that this is a three-step process, and we are in step two. So tonight, uh, council member Martinez Beltran will explain why she feels the council should move forward to step three, directing staff to go off and do research on ceasefire resolutions, peace resolutions, and bring those back for us to discuss at a future meeting, if the council majority decides to direct the staff to do that. As I mentioned, on February twenty-first, we know this can be a very emotional topic, and we appreciate so many of you coming out again tonight to express your concerns and thoughts about, uh, about what we have going on. We would ask, again, we know that this, because it's emotional, there can be, we want to make sure there's no outbursts, no cheering, no jeering, and no applause. We want to make sure that we can move through. We don't want anyone feeling intimidated by what they say. You may not agree with it. We may not agree with it, but we're going to be respectful to the fact that people are, have the right to speak, and we would ask that we too would be respectful. If you have any kind of signs, and I see some signs, we just simply ask, please don't hold them above your head and block anybody whose view who is behind you. Be respectful of that. If you're standing against the wall, fine, you know, raise it up. You're not going to block anybody's view. We are going to limit the public comment to a total of one hour, and because we have so many people signed up right now, we're going to allow comments for forty seconds. Forty seconds so that we can, we can get, the other option is, ladies and gentlemen, we'll go one minute, one minute, sixty minutes total. Not everyone's going to get to speak. I'm good with one minute. If that's what you want to go with.
Mayor?
We're going to go with, we're going to go with, we're going to go with one minute public comments, sixty minutes total. Uh, and so let me ask you this, ladies and gentlemen, please, if, if you don't need to speak for a minute, please get through your comments so that we can get as many in as possible. All right? So with that, I am going to, uh, what we're going to do is we're going to call out ten names at a time when we get to that point. Uh, right now, we're, before we get there, I'm going to turn it over to council member Martinez Beltran to make her presentation. But when we get to the point of public comment, Michelle, or, or Kim, are you going to call the names? Michelle. Michelle will call ten names. We're going to ask you to line up along that wall right there, and then when we call your name to step up to speak, time, at the moment we call your name. So you're going to need to move right up to the, right up to the podium and begin speaking for the one minute. We're not negotiating time. If you take twenty seconds to get to the microphone, I apologize for you. We're going to do one minute, sixty minutes total time. Council member Martinez Beltran, I turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, I, I would like to ask, could we do one minute and let everybody speak?
We're going to do one minute, sixty minutes total.
Okay.
What about the time calling out names?
We're calling names out. That's, we're going to have people lined up. The clock will not be running at that time. But, so we're not going to, listen, there's going to be time for public comment. We're not going to negotiate. I'm not negotiating right now at this point in time. Council member Martinez Beltran.
Thank you. Uh, with so, so much tragedy in Israel and Palestine, there are very real direct impacts we're feeling in our community. Many of our neighbors feel unheard, unsafe, or afraid, and some have come to their city hall for support. This is why I respectfully requested an agenda item for the council to decide whether to discuss a community drafted sustainable peace document, a compilation of community input, omissions, and review. We'll find a, uh, so we could find a way for our city council to support all of our community. Hence, performing my council member duties, I submitted a future agenda item request for our policy, which would have been publicly available following our protocol. At the mayor's direction, the request was censored from the agenda. I have had meaningful conversations with a diverse cross-section, as I stated earlier, including our Jewish temple, mosque, interfaith churches, schools, community, business and community members. Regardless of how one experiences what is happening in our world, we all want peace, as I was told, and I believe that. Community is built through open, inclusive dialogue, and diverse perspectives and experiences. The request was to propose council vote on whether to discuss the Sustainable Peace Document and some public action, whether a statement, a letter to federal officials, community conversations, community vigil, other forum, something to show compassion, acknowledge the fear, and bridge tension for all. We all share the concern that division will rise. However, research tells us that not addressing issues does not minimize division and actually further complicates solving these issues. The community needs our leadership, to my colleagues. We must all have the focus and the courage to lead with compassion, responsibility, and engage each other with respect. Let us commit as a united collective of community leaders, the community members, to come together and build community. It is important we acknowledge the pain, the suffering. Fear and isolation are neighbors who have been impacted by the war in Israel and in Palestine are experiencing. It is important we denounce antisemitism, anti-Arab, anti-Israeli, anti-Palestinian, anti-Islamophobic sentiments, incidents, violence, et cetera. It is important we reaffirm together each other's sense of safety here in Morgan Hill, so everyone knows they are supported and valued from their home. And what we acknowledge, our wish for sustainable peace, and that we offer to support how we can, which is the Morgan Hill Way. Thank you. That's why I have made this request, that this council have a discussion on the community drafted Sustainable Peace Document. From there, we might know where we go, colleagues, but I hope that we can come up with something, something that can ease what we are feeling, unseeing, and is real. This is real. That's all, that's all that I have.
Very good. Again, I would suggest we go to public comment and then bring it back for a discussion amongst the council. So with that, again, what we're going to do is we're going to call ten names, have them line up, one minute each, sixty minute total period of time.
So I'll call the first ten names. I will do my very best to pronounce them properly. Please be gracious with me. Um, Nuzi, Amin, Noshaba, Zain, Dina, Omar, Camila, Usman, Dima, and Saina. Please line up in that order. Nuzi, Amin, Noshaba, Zain, Dina, Omar, Camila, Usman, Dima, and Saina. And Kim, you can go ahead and start the timer.
What did she say?
Yeah, what I want to do though, I want to make sure Michelle and Kim, after the ten speakers.
I'll call the next ten.
We want to stop, want to stop the clock while you're calling ten new speakers up.
Okay.
Okay?
Then we're doing one minute, correct?
Minute, one minute per speaker. Okay, please.
Ready? Uh, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. So I wanted that you know.
Okay. So I wanted that you know, that first of all, good evening. Uh, when I moved to Morgan Hill, there were only 12,000 people over here. And I've always experienced kindness.
Hold on one second. I'm going to hold just up the clock if you would, real quick. Ladies and gentlemen, we, it's very difficult to hear if we can either have you speak up and then have less conversation in the, in the room that we helpful.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm very soft spoken.
Oh, no, that's okay. That's okay. You, you start again. We'll start the clock again.
So, good evening. So when I moved to Morgan Hill, there were only 12,000 people over here. I've been here for almost 50 years. I've always experienced kindness, friendship, and decency from this community. And I know that our community will not stay silent while almost 2 million people, including children from childbirth onwards, die of starvation. Only a ceasefire and humanitarian aid can put an end to it. I'm appealing to the community, to, to you, the humanity within you, that is, uh, and requesting the city council to put a resolution for a permanent ceasefire on the agenda for your next meeting.
Okay, your time is up. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, uh, Councilmember, thank you so much. Uh, this is a huge dilemma. Uh, we have been, uh, working together, Islamic community, along with the Jewish community locally, on many, many projects together. We did a lot of, uh, civil projects, uh, in Morgan Hill, around. And unfortunately, we are in a position right now where we are standing against each other on this, uh, issue. A lot of responsibility lies on the management committee, uh, who you guys are, who are going to be making the right decision for us. It is very important, whatever decision we make, it impacts, uh, the world, around the world, and it impacts their, uh, lifestyle. So, uh, I urge all of you, war is never a solution. It never has been. Uh, we have been in many wars around, uh, for years, and we never come up with the right solution. So ceasefire is the solution and resolving all these issues on the table is the right way to go about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
No child should ever look at the sky and wonder what's falling is death or dinner. That's the reality in Gaza. The residents of Morgan Hill truly are confused by this council statements. We've heard multiple times, you don't believe in proclamations or resolutions being issued because they're not beneficial. Yet, earlier today, three new proclamations, which were wonderful, were issued. The proclamation of wonderful Women's History Month, but a proclamation to support the ending of innocent civilians killed, of which 9,500 are Palestinian women, who have already been killed, is deemed not beneficial to this community who has spoken their heart out last meeting and this meeting, whose families are being impacted. Please show your Morgan Hill community the same compassion you showed to earlier communities. Don't treat us like second-class citizens. Please, no discriminatory practices. Palestinian life, Israeli lives should be addressed.
Thank you so much.
Good evening. Um, we haven't heard it yet today. You will hear it in a little bit. Um, some people will say that a resolution calling for a ceasefire, that is calling for an end to the fighting, calling for peace, makes them feel unsafe. But we, of course, empathize with those who feel unsafe. I'd argue that they should examine themselves if a call for peace makes them feel unsafe. We can explain why this historically unprecedented level of, of violence, death, and destruction should continue just so they can feel safe. Welcome them to join us in calling for peace. We intend no harm to anyone. Please listen to your community and learn humanity and call for peace. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Dina and I'm a proud Palestinian-American Christian and a graduate of Life, Live Oak High School. I'm here today to urge you to vote in favor of adding the ceasefire resolution on the agenda. Over 35,000 killed in a five-month period, and more on the brink of starvation. 12,000 of those are children. There is the outrage for these innocent lives lost. The indiscriminate bombing, the targeted sniper shooting, starvation, lack of clean water and hygiene, all of that, the last end. My first priority is to protect all innocent civilians. My first priority is protecting my family in Gaza. I already last, lost several members of my family and many more are threatened to starvation. I must end the violence now. This is not controversial. A ceasefire is a call to stop the killing of all innocent children and people. It's a call to save humanity. There's violence, there's complicity in this genocide. A ceasefire is not.
Thank you so much. We appreciate it. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Dima Kori. I am a resident of Morgan Hill for 24 years. And I speak to you as your neighbor who has been here living and experiencing kindness in Morgan Hill. I'm a proud Palestinian Christian. The reason I'm bringing that up, because many people try to paint this war as a war, religious war, political war. It's not. Palestinians are as diverse as can be. We're Christians, Muslims, and historically Jewish. So this war is detrimental for the Israelis and the Palestinians who live there. We can talk about it in the comfort of our home here, but they are the ones who are suffering. We look, I, I urge you to put a ceasefire on the agenda because it's good for the people there and it's good for us, your neighbors here. Everybody in this room, from all background and religion. 20,000 people killed, 70% of them are women and children. Hostages are not back. War never brought peace. Peace brings peace and, and bring the hostages back and make people live in peace. Israel and Palestinian.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
War is divisive.
Thank you for your time. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Hello, City Council. So I'm standing before you guys today to ask you to add the ceasefire agenda item to another meeting. And you must have noticed how much of an impact this genocide has had on this community and frankly, the whole world. And I myself have someone who's close to my family, acting as a foreign doctor in Gaza right now, who has to live through unimaginable horrors and pains. And if you want to talk about statistics, you should know that the destruction in Gaza is equivalent to all the schools in Morgan Hill being bombed and destroyed, along with all the children and staff dead inside those schools. So I don't know if any of y'all have kids, but I want you to imagine that for a second. Um, and I know that you guys are, this entity is capable of passing such a thing because in 2022, Morgan Hill Council issued a Support for Ukraine proclamation. So it's up to you to decide whether, um, Arab Palestinian lives matter as much in this context. Uh, don't leave this council meeting with complicity.
Thank you for your time. We appreciate it. Thank you, sir.
We've heard the claim that a ceasefire is divisive over 100 times now. You've heard that calling for the end of the killing and the intentional starvation of people in Gaza, who only breed more hate locally. When we debate, I want to share that time to debate is a luxury. Last time we spoke, or I spoke here two weeks ago, I showed that dozens of my relatives have been killed over the last five months. Last Thursday, I lost my aunt. She needed kidney dialysis for months. And since no hospital could provide that treatment due to hospitals being bombed and medical aids such as anesthesia, medicine being blocked from getting in, she died from preventable, preventable kidney failure. You don't seem to understand that a ceasefire is the only way to get hostages out and the massive amount of humanitarian aid that gets in. Everyone here talks with an immense amount of privilege. You don't seem to understand the gravity of what's going on the ground. It's literally life and death. I have other relatives who have medical conditions and they will die if they don't get medical aid. That is, that's the fact. It's already happening now.
Thank you, sir.
Sorry. Thank you. Uh, so the procedures, your procedures are very convoluted and we saw it live today with the Zoom discussions. Why is the ceasefire still not on the agenda? We have educated you on the issue so you can no longer say that you don't know. Either you don't understand or, and you don't care, and that's a shame. Or you do understand and you're choosing silence, which means complicity, and that's a crime in the case of genocide. Or you don't understand the scale and the horrendousness of the genocide, and that in itself is a tragedy. We are asking for peace where everybody has dignity, equality, and justice, and for all. We are asking for a ceasefire. Sustainable peace is what we currently have in the West Bank, and it's not working. Beyond the political calculations and the political correctness, there is more duty and there is the truth.
Yep. Appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Our next 10 speakers, um, I think it's Alfie, Amina, Salam, Ismail, Naz, and you're going to be in this order, please. Mohammed, Rita, Ashera, Sarit, and Verid. Our first speaker is Alfie, A-L-F-I-Y-E, I believe.
Alfia.
Alfia. Alfia, followed by Amina.
Thank you so much for attention. I just wanted to ask, uh, yeah, ceasefire is for all, for everybody, and both sides will benefit. And there is no, um, okay, for ceasefire, because I don't want to take more time. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
I'm here to speak about the atrocities that are happening in Gaza and Tahrir Sanaa. And, um, I just want to remind everybody about the statistic today. It's 152 days, which is five months and two days. Imagine all the killing and the atrocities that are happening in five months, 20 days, today. Um, over 30,000 people are murdered, they're dead, killed. Over 72,000 are injured. 25,000 women and children are killed. That was, uh, confirmed by the US Congress the other day. 25,000 women and children. Just think about it. It's so heavy to say it. 25,000 children and women are then are killed.
Ma'am, your time is up. Appreciate it.
Followed by Ismail.
I'm going to speak facts. 1947, the ship landed in Palestine with refugees with a big sign saying, "The Germans destroyed our homes. Please don't disappoint us." Palestinians welcomed the refugees in their country and they were safe. A year later, a genocide and ethnic cleansing was took. The Palestinians were committed, took their homes, stolen them. And some of these people live today in this community, and they have no right to return home. Today, the whole world has witnessed the genocide's livestream on the public television. ICJ ruled against Israel. Order to stop the genocide going against the ICJ ruling is not only immoral, but has legal consequences. If you're not part of the solution, I learned that you are part of the problem. I'm just asking you not to be complicit in killing the Palestinians. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Ismail, followed by Naz.
Well, I'm an army veteran and member of this community. Today, as we stand in solidarity with Ukraine, condemning aggression and advocating for peace, we must confront a glaring hypocrisy in our stance. How can we champion peace in one conflict while actively obstructing a ceasefire in another? Also, let's not overlook the racial and religious biases at play. Are we supporting one cause while ignoring the other, other because one side is perceived as white and Christian, while the other is perceived as brown and Muslim? Are we allowing prejudice to cloud our judgment and determine the value of human lives? Consider the heartbreaking story of a Palestinian Christian mother and daughter seeking refuge in a church in Gaza. The daughter was shot first by an Israeli sniper, and as her mother bravely attempted to drag her daughter to safety, she too was killed by an Israeli sniper's bullet. Also, consider many Christian leaders such as Pope Francis support the ceasefire against Israel's targeting of.
I have been speaking.
Followed by Mohammed, followed by Rita.
Hello. I actually came here with a speech prepared, but, um, I was volunteering in my son's school today. Uh, there was a helicopter that went over during recess. All the kids lit up with joy, so happy to see it. Then I thought of these Palestinian children. They hear that and they're terrified. Today, I came with my son, who has special needs, who's in an amazing inclusion program at the district here. And there was so much anxiety that he felt because the people that are against the ceasefire were antagonizing the people that are for a ceasefire. He was screaming and crying because he had a meltdown. And you know what the opposing people against the ceasefire did? They laughed at him. They laughed at him. And then, once they found out that he had special needs, they turned around and said, "Why would you bring this type of child here? Is that okay? This is supposed to be an inclusive city." What is happening? We're saying, "No, please, have a ceasefire." This is not okay.
Mohammed, followed by Rita.
Uh, hello. Hi, hello, everybody. Uh, I came here to say, say ceasefire now, please, please. And, and mostly, uh, some, look, see some people here in the line. And I'm making fun of my dad now, which is impolite. So, so I came here to say, say, "Let's start the ceasefire now," now because Israel has, has, because most of my favorite type of restaurants. Are Palestinian, and who knows? And who knows? You might be sad. Wait, wait, I, I will, bosses. Bye.
We appreciate your time.
Rita, followed by Bashira.
I'm in City Council of Morgan Hill. My name is Rita Gutierrez Fisher. I have been involved, been involved in South Santa Clara County for 50 years. Moved into my first home in Morgan Hill 47 years ago. I have represented South County as a member of the County Grand Jury, board member of South County Alternatives, which is now Community Solutions, founding member of Congregation Emeth, South County Jewish Community, and currently on the Board of Directors as Vice President of Congregation Emeth. I'm here to ask you as Morgan Hill City Councilmembers, not pass a resolution with regards to the war in Gaza. As councilmembers, your responsibility is to run the municipality of the city of Morgan Hill. The residents of Morgan Hill who want to express their concerns about the war, they should contact their respective federal representatives. Thank you.
Thank you.
Vasheva, followed by Sarit.
This is Liel Hatzaroni. She was 12 years old when she was murdered and burned by Hamas on October 7th. The remains of her body were found a month and a half later in the field. Since the day that Liel died, we, the Jews, are facing ongoing attacks from members of this community, led by terror, conceal on American Islamic relations. War has been going from one city hall to another, spreading lies about the Jews. I, as a Jew, was blamed for genocide and apartheid. I encourage you all to go to Israel and see for yourself the so-called apartheid. Regarding genocide, in 1970, lived in Gaza 340,000 people. Today, it's 2 million. In Berkeley, a proper Palestinian mob surrounded the campus auditorium, broke a window, and harassed Jewish students trying to enter the building. Please stop this madness.
Thank you.
Sarit, followed by Verid.
So, just by standing in the line waiting for the door to open, one could feel the tension.
Yeah, it's hard to hear you.
Just by standing in the waiting, in the line waiting for the door to open, one could feel the tension. Just by looking at the room, you can see the line between the two groups. This is disastrous. This is the community, but it can, this can only create more tension and hate. Leaders, when you were elected, it is in the understanding of your part, respecting all members of the community, addressing city matters. Acts of hate here, swastikas in high school, our safety, foreign affairs was not one of them.
Thank you, ma'am. We appreciate your time.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmember. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Sarit and I am proposing a ceasefire resolution. On October 7th, Hamas not only shot, raped, slaughtered, and murdered many people, but also killed any future attempt for peace. Eliminating Hamas for once and for all is the only way to bring peace in the Middle East. If you don't live there, you cannot understand what a ceasefire or a wudna means. It is a request for more death. This is why I think the city should focus on the local issues, real problems which affected our society, like the violence in the street, the public education, the public transportation, and how the city can benefit local businesses. Please say no to the ceasefire resolution. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next 10 speakers are, I believe it's Elok, Ronit, Ido, Ido, Wanda A, DH, Dima, Ziz, Yusef, Zain Y, and Rabbi Faith Joy Danowitz. Our first speaker is Elok, followed by Ronit. You can start, sir.
Good evening. Uh, I was in Israel visiting family on October 7th. I felt that is to be a target of violence. And then I came here and here. I felt that is to be a target of violence. And then I came here, and here again, I don't feel safe. Well, we have swastikas in the high school, we have demonstrations, we have hate talk over everywhere. And what, what happened here in this evening is like steering it up. Bring those two groups together, run room, shouting at each other. It may be civilized here. You should have seen what happened in the, in the line before people came here. But please don't make it worse. Stop it here, because this will not end the war. And it will not break peace, not to Israel, not to Gaza, and not to Morgan Hill. Thank you.
Ronet, followed by Ido.
I support my, my previous talker. He talked really, he was standing in line, and he was almost fighting, almost ceasefire fighting. I was born in Israel, raised in Israel, served in the IDF proudly. There's no other country like Israel. Consciously, the way they treat people, you guys are totally missing sound. And I was texting you guys. I wanted to speak with you. And sit down. Yes, I can, yeah, I can, I can send the email again. We were brutally attacked on October 7. Did anybody here condemn it? I don't, I didn't hear it. We were, people were murdered. They were burned alive. All families were burned alive, okay? All families were burned alive. Who did you have to hide? They were burned. They were, they were, they called this because they're ready for war. Okay, and the UN has to let it be. How can you talk about ceasefire?
Time is up, ma'am.
Ido, followed by Rhonda A.
They want to welcome us, guys. They want to welcome us, guys. This is what these people want to be here. They want to bring more guns. They want to bring more destruction. They want to bring terrorists into this community. Are you going to allow that? These wrong people, they rip their women so sadistically, so savagely, they were raped of heart. Their peace, their bodies did not respond. Is this the hate? You want to be here, this community? We cannot stand. We are so divided. We are so divided in this war resolution already. Do you want more hate here on a level not being for the Holocaust? Stay out of the ceasefire. Do not more resolution.
Thank you, sir.
Rhonda will be followed by Dee, and then Dima.
Hello, my name is Rhonda. I'm a longtime resident of Morgan Hill. I've been here since 1979. I want to urge the Morgan Hill City Councils, put a ceasefire resolution. Stop using our 550,000 Morgan Hill tax dollars to fund an obvious genocide of the Palestinian people. Over 35,000 Palestinians have been massacred. Yes, massacred. Those seeking shelter have no way of getting food or clean water. Many are dying of starvation. Israelis are not allowing humanitarian aid to get to people that so desperately need it. Just some airdrops for recently made. Unfortunately, that is not nearly enough. The United States are funding this genocide by sending minimal aid to help the innocent Palestinians, thinking that should be okay. Oh, it is absolutely not okay.
Thank you for your time. Your time is up.
Dee, Dima, Aziz.
Hi, thank you. First of all, I'm not associated with CARE. I'm an American citizen. I'm not Arab. I'm not Muslim. I'm just here and horrified with what I'm seeing. And as we see things go along, now we're at a point where you see babies, just skin and bones. And then just last week, 112 Palestinians were killed because they were trying to get aid. 760 were injured. And President Biden.
We need a ceasefire.
He's calling for a ceasefire.
There's got to be a ceasefire, because Ramadan, if you get into a circumstance where this continues through Ramadan, Israel and Jerusalem, it could be very, very dangerous.
So, so Biden's calling for a ceasefire. It's your guys' too, or else there are going to be crimes of complacency. That is legal. We can actually, you can be critical for that.
Thank you.
Dima. Aziz.
Hello. Why a ceasefire? All lives are sacred. Since October, the Israeli government dropped the equivalent of two Hiroshima bombs on this air prison called Gaza. Around 250 people are dying every day. An ongoing study stipulates in the absence of a ceasefire, 85,000 people will be killed. 50% of Gazans are experiencing hunger and starvation. We already lost 20 people as of yesterday from malnutrition. 26% children under 5 are experiencing severe malnutrition. That number will increase to 57. This is not a foreign policy. It's a moral issue.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Youssef.
Peace and prayers be with everyone in this room right now. I grew up in the surrounding area. I grew up going to Gilroy Gardens. And like many of us here, I have fun every summer at the Aquatic Center right here in Morgan Hill. And I come with my family to enjoy July 4th fireworks. And ever since coming back from college, I've loved how this community does its best to stand together and stand against hate. I mean, I go to the gym, I see those posters. I go to the grocery store, I see those posters. We stand against hate. This community constantly takes steps to stand against all forms of oppression. Now, what we're seeing going on in Palestine and Israel is, I can't even, I don't have words to describe it, especially as someone from Generation Z. We see it all on our phones, unfiltered, uncensored, unbiased. We need to do what this community stands for and stand against all civilian deaths. And this is what this resolution will do. Thank you.
Thank you.
Rabbi Faith Joy Dantowitz. And if there's another Zain in the room that you did sign up, please come up. It's your turn.
Good evening, Mayor Turner and council members. I'm Rabbi Faith Joy Dantowitz, the Rabbi of Congregation Emeth here in Morgan Hill. Season losses attack on Israel October 7. I and my community have experienced ongoing fear for loved ones in Israel, hostages in Gaza, and are mourn the loss of those murdered on October 7. We've also experienced a sharp rise in antisemitism in the Bay Area. My heart breaks for the suffering of Israelis and Palestinians, and I know that your hearts break too. You are not elected to work on foreign affairs, and we are seeing how raising this issue is not bringing peace to our community. Using this topic in our agenda brings out worse hate speech, false statements, and it's sowing division in our community. I urge all of you to vote no on adding any resolution about the Israel-Hamas war to the agenda at play for an end to the war and the end to suffering of all.
Our next 10 speakers are Shala, followed by Debbie Israel, Sal A., Castle, Aaron, Rabbi Mendel Libro, Avi, Gabby, Kina, Marbili. Our first speaker is Shala.
Good evening, Mayor Turner, council members. My name is Shala, and I'm a Morgan Hill resident and a healthcare provider to children. Many of my friends and colleagues are Palestinians who have been directly affected by this war. The past five months, our community has been horrified by the images coming out of Gaza. My six-year-old son often asks me, "Mama, why isn't anyone doing anything to stop this war?" I'm embarrassed to think that in a few years, he will read about the Palestinian genocide in school, and will ask again, "Why don't my community speak up?" But now, as if death and destruction wasn't enough, we're witnessing forced starvation, disease, famine being inflicted upon Palestinians and their innocent children. Enough is enough. We will not stay silent in doing what is right. The entire world has united under the banner of the Palestinian freedom. Please do what is right and agendize the ceasefire resolution so that we may join the countless other cities that have been voiced their support.
Debbie, followed by Sal.
I'm Rabbi Debbie Israel, Rabbi Emerita of Congregation Emeth. I had a different message that I was planning to say tonight that has changed. When we arrived tonight, many of us warmly greeted one another, some even exchanged hugs. This is the result of years of community building, years of sharing values and working together on behalf of everyone in the community. When we entered the room and the divide began, intention filled the room, shouting, "Are you with us or them? How many of us? How many of them?" I'm a rabbi. I pray for peace every day, not only in the Middle East, but here in this community. Why would we risk the peace and harmony we share here by bringing this divisiveness of this resolution into our community? We appreciate the council members' peace resolution and your intention. But I believe that people in the Middle East are working on this, even as we.
Ma'am, thank you so much.
Sal, Castle, Aaron.
Muslim and Jewish communities of the constituents in our community have a long history of working together. And I'd say, we get along quite well. So this proposed peace resolution is not about taking sides. It's certainly not about antisemitism. It's a recognition of human catastrophe in Gaza and Israel, and preservation of life, innocent life. I say that again. It's a recognition of human catastrophe in Gaza and Israel, preservation of innocent life. If we cannot even acknowledge those basic tenets, what, we have to ask ourselves, what values do we subscribe to? And what type of a civil society do we belong in? Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Castle, Aaron, Rabbi Mendel Libro.
This resolution creates only divisions since there are residents for both sides. Case in point, the argument today had people on both sides yelling. I recorded it and can show you. The word genocide has been used frequently. The definition of genocide is deliberate killing of a large number of people who were from a particular nation or ethnic group with the aim of destroying that nation or group. This war started after October, this October 7th slaughter of around 1,200 Israeli civilians and kidnapping of 240 more. The UN came out with a report publicly two days ago that states that the rapes that Hamas was accused of did occur. You can find this on the UN website. What is going on is an eradication of the terrorist organization that committed these atrocities. 30,000 dead is horrible, and we should all be angry. Hamas put the civilians in harm's way before attacking Israel. Be angry at Hamas, the attackers. Please vote no.
Thank you, sir.
Rabbi Mendel, Avi, followed by Gabby.
Good evening, Mayor Turner, council members, and fellow community members. My name is Aaron. I'm a 22-year resident here in Morgan Hill, member of the local Jewish community, and supporter of the State of Israel, the only democracy in the Middle East. The State of Israel is at war with Hamas, who is a proxy army, and has long been recognized by the US government as a foreign terror group. They have killed Americans, Israelis, and persons of other nations. There was a ceasefire on October 6. Hamas broke it on October 7, and all the people suffer. A fear statement by the council risks missing Hamas's ideology of hatred and violence. Please, no resolution.
Thank you, sir.
Rabbi Mendel, Avi, Gabby.
My name is Rabbi Mendel Libro, from the Hadad Jewish Center of South County. How can we stand here today and say that this is not going to bring division in the community when we see it out in the open and that, like we've said on the line, on both sides have said how much anguish it has brought? There's a lot of pain, but this is only ripping the community apart. Going forward with a resolution that is entirely, the entire Jewish community is against because it will hurt them, is wrong. The entire local Jewish community. So please, don't pass this resolution. You know, I, I wanted to really start with a positive note. And that is Morgan Hill is a beautiful place. And I'm not saying it here. I tell this to all my colleagues. I don't think there's many cities throughout California, throughout America, the welcoming from all the council members, all of them, the embrace, you know, the love that I felt here, and we just want to continue. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Good evening, Mayor. Dear council member, my name is Avi. I'm a proud resident of Morgan Hill. And I'm standing here as an Israeli, as a member of the Jewish community. And actually, there's a lot of misinformation, misinformation that is going on. October 7 changed the life of many, the hopes high, but we didn't hear anything, right? October 7, the amount of people that were killed, raped, babies burned, Israel is equivalent to wiping out Morgan Hill completely. Imagine what would you do if Morgan Hill was attacked in one day and everyone was killed, raped, burned alive? We didn't hear any noises from the community or any announcement or any request to stop that or run any resolution. We don't hear even any resolutions to ask for all the babies with elderly people with Alzheimer that are holding panels 30, 40 feet underground without seeing light, no food, no water. So.
Thank you. Your time is up.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks, Avi. Evening. My name is Gabby. I live in Morgan Hill for five years. I came from Israel. I'm a founder, tech entrepreneur, and building companies for my entire life. I was born in 90s, 74, 74, a few months before, you know, the Yom Kippur War from many Arab countries who attacked us. And luckily, we won. And so I'm alive here to talk on October 6. Last year, obviously, there was a ceasefire, and obviously, we didn't choose the war to start. Basically, what happens now is that we have lots of hostages in Gaza. And what we ask is basically to bring them home first, and then we can talk about peace and negotiate all other stuff. So bring them home now, and then we can discuss everything else. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Today, I will stick to facts, numbers, and data. Fact one, you are watching live and in color the brutal and inhumane destruction of diverse lives. Fact two, USA Today highlighted that a majority of Muslims and half of American Jews support a ceasefire. Fact three, more than 500 employees of dozens of synagogues in over 140 Jewish organizations signed a letter calling for a ceasefire. Fact four, there is nothing more American than paying your taxes, and our taxes are funding bombs being dropped in Israel. This is a domestic issue, period. Fact five, over 150 countries in the world support a ceasefire. Fact six, fix. Oh, goodness, fact six, hope has supported a ceasefire. In fact, seven, the larger part of the world agrees ceasefire now.
Thank you.
Are you happy now? Jews rule the world. Is that something we heard from Israel? No, those were some of the things that were yelled at me after last week's Gilroy Council meeting. I'm not happy about the strife. But you know what I'm less happy about? That some feel that these kind of comments are okay here in South County. And that's why I'm asking not to move forward with either of these resolutions, because that's the kind of divisiveness we are seeing now when these things are brought up. Why not instead, asking municipal bodies here to take a stand on something they have no control over? How about all of us here on both sides of this issue stand up to hateful incidents against any group right here in South County? So comments like those are not tolerated anymore. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next 10 speakers are Rick, Donna, Nadine, Omar, Kohava, Eric, Shlomit, Irawav, Yigal, Peter. Our first speaker is Rick, followed by Donna, and then Nadine.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. As a longtime Morgan Hill resident, member of Congregation Emeth, as well as a member of the interfaith community of South County, I'd like to say that we all recognize what a tragedy the situation in Israel and Gaza is. However, a city council resolution will do nothing to alleviate the suffering there. It will serve to divide our community and make the Jewish residents of Morgan Hill feel less safe. When I attended the council meeting in Gilroy recently, I witnessed many thoughtful and respectful inner changes on both sides of the issue. But I also witnessed anti-Semitic tropes and calls to eradicate the Jews. A resolution at this time will do more to build walls instead of bridges. The community is best served by voting no on the proposed agendizing of this resolution and allowing the federal government to work with both sides to achieve a negotiated ceasefire. Thank you.
Donna, followed by Nadine.
Good evening. I am here today speaking about a brutal genocide in Gaza. There's intentional ethnic cleansing through intentional starvation and withholding of food for Palestinians. There is no greater evil than massacring starving civilians, collecting food for their dying children. More than 1,000 children have had one or both legs amputated, none without anesthesia. Just pause and think about that. Move with yourself. Right now, I'm saying, I'm saying to see the difference between Nazis and Zionists. No war crimes against humanity. It is illegal in all circumstances to attack hospitals, ambulances, or other medical facilities, or to. other medical facilities or to interfere with their ability to provide for the sick. Our community is being impacted by all of Israel's atrocities. We must protect life. A ceasefire will bring the community together. It's the humane thing to do. Call for a ceasefire.
Thank you, ma'am. Your time is up. We appreciate you being here. Thank you for your time. Thank you.
Nadine, followed by Omar.
As a community, we are more concerned or fearful of being falsely accused of being antisemitic than we are with actual genocide deniers and apologists. Our value system is certainly broken. Israel kills two mothers every hour. Palestinian children are being killed at rapid speed with our taxpayer money. Thirty, thirteen thousand children, Palestinians and babies have been slaughtered. There are people here claiming that their safety hinges on Palestinians being slaughtered. Knowing full well the violence of their words will incite on our communities and it's happening already. And you refuse to speak out against the killing of women, children, doctors, aid trucks. It says you're comfortable with violence in your own community. Silence doesn't bring peace. Add a permanent ceasefire resolution to the agenda and vote yes. All I will say is that people who say there's division, yes, there is division. It's because we are witnessing silence when there is a group of-
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Omar. Kohava. Daraq, and then Shlomit.
First, I would like to thank the committee for allowing us to talk here. Um, I'm seeing a lot of signs here saying genocides. I don't hear one person, one person talking about what Hamas did on October 7th. We had a ceasefire. We did not want a war. But still the Israeli trying to have ceasefire. Nobody here talks about how many ceasefires Hamas has rejected. Fact one, fact two, fact three, she never said anything about all the facts of what happened. But still Israeli girls have been raped every day, every day. I want to see how many-
Ma'am, ma'am, keep to us, keep the conversation.
How many of you would like to be raped every day?
Ma'am.
Would you allow that? Would your husband allow that? They're all laughing like the Israelis are lying. We're all just having-
Thank you so much.
Eric.
Please, if you hold it down.
Followed by Marav.
So I'm going to take a little bit of a different angle. I mean, is this like peace and calm in the community? It's not doing it, right? So nobody can be really against peace, right? That this is, I'm not against the sun coming up tomorrow either. So if your resolution, the entire text of the resolution is like the title of what you're presenting, sustainable peace, an end to the war and the loss of life in Israel and Palestine, everybody would be for it. But this is a concentrated campaign on one side, going around every city. But then, and actually you should update your material because only group in the Middle East which does not want peace right now is Hamas, right? So talk to them. I would like you guys to go and, and, um, and agree on the same resolution that Gilroy did, which is great. So we're not going to take sides in this.
Thank you so much.
Shlomit, followed by Marav, Yigal, and then Peter.
Good evening. My name is Shlomit Bloom. At this time, international ceasefire negotiations are moving at full speed, led by top officials at international levels. Officials we elect to deal with foreign affairs. We elect city officials to deal with local affairs. And so this issue is imposed on you and takes away valuable time from the city's business. Our stance on foreign affairs has no impact on the negotiation or parties involved and only negatively affects your constituents. When the world demanding to put the resolution on the agenda of local communities and councils is initiated by care and non supporter of Hamas. The White House disavowed its relationship with this divisive organization.
Thank you, ma'am. Your time is up.
Marav, Yigal, Peter.
As a doctor, resolution Gilroy and the rest of Santa Clara County had. No resolutions about foreign affairs. The non-binding resolution doesn't solve anything but encourages hate, conflict, fear and suspicion. Focus only on municipal issues. This international conflict requires deep understanding of the history. Don't be influenced by slogans from people who are not even local residents. There was a ceasefire on October 6th that Hamas breached. When we heard from the White House yesterday that they rejected another Israeli offer for ceasefire. The moment Hamas lays down its weapons and releases the Israeli hostages, there will be a ceasefire. It's that easy. Beware that Hamas ideology wants to annihilate Israel and to disrupt the West, to disrupt the West. The British Prime Minister admitted it in his speech this week and tonight is a manifestation of this disruption. The enemy of Gaza is not Israel but Hamas, but is the sole ruler there since Israel left.
Thank you. Your time is up. Thank you.
Good evening. Please vote no on agendizing foreign affairs issues which were not resolved by much higher international authorities. The city council's mission is to deal with the city's affair and well-being. Your responsibility is to unify your diverse communities. The push for a resolution in Gaza Street does the opposite. The US government is leading a bilateral ceasefire negotiation to begin in less than a week. Ironically, Hamas reject the ceasefire, refusing to release the names of Israeli hostages to be freed, alive or dead by now. Please use your valuable time and resources to unify the community by fighting against all type of hate crime in Morgan Hill and its beautiful surroundings. This is a core part of-
Thank you. Sir, your time is up.
Thank you.
We appreciate it. Thank you.
Peter.
Hello. My name is Peter Mendel. I've been a resident of Morgan Hill for 40 years. Um, I've been president of Congregation Ameth and I've worked closely with the Morgan Hill Police to deal with antisemitic threats, uh, and incidents that help us improve our security. So I thank you for all of that support. The council, however, should not be taking positions that will have the effect of growing hatred and risking the security of our community. A council member can say whatever they want as individuals, but the council itself should focus on the business of Morgan Hill. The council has no role in foreign affairs. If the council is going to get involved in issues of foreign affairs, then will the council take a stand on issues all over the globe? I mean, would, would it make sense if I ask you what's the council's position on the, on Rohingyas in, in Myanmar? What, what is your, what is your opinion on, on the Uyghurs of China?
Your time is up. Thank you.
Our next 10 speakers are Natalie, Elizabeth, Anna, Miriam, Deena Saba, Sophia, Inga, Egardo, Dora, Wendy. Natalie, you can go ahead. Natalie will be followed by Natalie Brisbane. Who's, are you Natalie Brisbane?
Yeah.
Okay.
Natalia.
No, Natalie Brisbane is the first speaker. Natalie, followed by Elizabeth and then Anna.
My name is Natalie and I'm a Jewish resident of Morgan Hill for over 12 years. I teach my kids to love their relatives and friends, no matter what color they are, who they love or what they believe. Why is our local city council wasting time on complicated geopolitical conflicts on the other side of the world? We haven't taken up resolutions on the war in Sudan or in Myanmar. Why in Israel? Resolutions like these only increase tensions in communities and stoke already increased antisemitic and anti-Israel hate. For the sake of our community, for the sake of so many other things we should be focusing on locally, for the sake of my children's safety, the city council must vote no on considering a ceasefire resolution. Thank you.
Thank you.
Elizabeth, followed by Anna.
Hi, um, I'm, I'm here to urge the city council to not agenda as a resolution addressing the current conflict between Hamas and Israel. Um, Yvonne, you're talking about how maybe everybody wants peace. We can bring it together. Well, you know, you've heard someone compare Nazism with Zionism. So clearly that's not working. Um, like all in the room, I feel the suffering of the Israelis and the Palestinians caught up in the war. However, I believe your role as council members is to ensure that all members of your community feel supported and not to escalate local tensions with non-binding resolutions. We've seen in the Bay Area how local resolutions have left community members feeling unsafe. And I know Jewish students who feel threatened in our Morgan Hill schools. I'm a Morgan Hill resident and, and have been a Congregation Ameth members, member for over 20 years. During that time, the South County interfaith community has created strong bonds of friendship and respect. These bonds have been frayed when this war has had a personal impact on many members of our community on both sides.
Thank you, ma'am. Your time is up.
Anna, followed by Miriam and then Sophia.
My name is Anna Stepanamko. I have a family in Ukraine and I follow Ukrainian youth and talk to our family every day. I am disgusted by some Palestinian speakers drawing a parallel between Palestine and Ukraine. Ukraine associates itself with Israel, not Palestine. The support of Israel in Ukraine is the highest in Europe particularly. When Putin openly supports Hamas and Iran and during accepted Houthis and Hezbollah's delegations in Moscow. The October 7th attack happened on Putin's birthday. He is the main beneficiary of the Middle East conflict. He takes attention from that war in Ukraine. As President Biden said, Putin and Hamas is a new axis of evil. Believe in peace, you need to find, fight against evil. You all want peace, not war. But it will be no peace in Middle East till Hamas is in power. Unfortunately, Morgan Hill resolution will not help there and it will bring the people of here.
Thank you so much.
Miriam, followed by Sophia, then Inga.
Thank you. This room is full of people with broken hearts and people who are angry on both sides. We're grieving and we're angry and it's hard to think straight. But we're trying. We're trying to understand each other, some of us, and some of us are just stuck in the anger. This is not an issue that should be brought before the city council. It's too complex. It's too emotional. It's true, I don't want the word, use the word divisive, but you've seen what happens. You've seen it for yourselves. Please don't bring this before your council. This is a beautiful town in a beautiful state, in the most wonderful country in the world. And we have severe things we have to deal with overseas, but it's not our place locally to figure out what the exact wording needs to be so everybody will be happy.
Your time is up. Thank you.
Sophia, then Inga, then Egardo.
As an Arab Muslim from Israel, there is nothing that I want to see more than peace in the region. I think we need to be clear on the actual situation and not, and not hold to false hopes. We had a ceasefire on October 6th. Four thousands of Hamas militants infiltrated Israel, slaughtering thousands of Israelis, including Muslim Arabs, abducting 240 Israelis, including Muslim Arabs. I've indicated just a few days ago by Vice President Harris, we could have this war over tomorrow if Hamas releases the hostages and surrender. Israel, like any other country, not accept living next to a Hamas ISIS state, but vows to kill every citizen in the country. Israel is not, is fighting this war against terror, to seethe terror, so all of us can live safely wherever we are. Everyone is protesting these days against Israel, but we don't see Israeli Arabs protesting because we know the truth.
Thank you, ma'am.
Hello, Nino. Ladies and gentlemen.
Inga, Managado.
I'm here to urge city council to abstain from introducing resolution of ceasefire in Gaza as it is not constructive and actually allows division and hostilities on our street. I am a home health nurse and working in this community area for over 22 years and visiting patients in the homes. Have never experienced vandalism and intimidation until a couple of months ago just because I support bringing home the hostages. My car was vandalized three times already. I'm intimidated on the streets. And tried to, people tried to drive me off the, the street, literally. And police department has determined it as a hate crime and investigating it. So if city council should be encouraging to introduce any kind of resolution.
Ma'am, your time is up. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Egardo Lover. I'm a board member of the Jewish Community Relations Council of Silicon Valley. My family in Kyiv is near the heart adjacent to Gaza, was attacked by the Hamas animals and several of their neighbors are still held in tunnels by criminals that the ceasefire would help. I'm here today to respectfully request you vote no on agendizing a resolution on the Israel Hamas conflict. The area, several cities have considered ceasefire resolutions resulting in five to 10 hours of public comments, aggressively disrespectful behavior, name-calling, antisemitic epithets, physical altercations and property damage. This local resolution have no impact on the foreign conflict and only serve to create animosity in our communities, leaving lasting impacts that make residents feel unsafe and students unwelcome in their own schools. During times of crisis, elected leaders must work to bring people together and not tear us apart. Thank you.
Thank you.
I am not allowed to call people animals. It's not acceptable.
We're gonna, the next speaker, please, hold your comments. Hold your comments, please. Next speaker. I'm not going to tell you again, we'll remove you from the, the building.
Dora Rosen. My proud, I'm proud to be a member of a Jewish family that has been in this area for five generations. God, I can hardly speak. I'm so upset to hear so many other Jewish people not seem to understand. I mean, I know that many of us, probably most of us who are Jewish and are here today had family members who were killed by the Nazis. And I'm among that group myself. And I just wish the world had stood up. Nobody stood up. It's well known how complex that the US was and how our government was even supporting the Nazis and would not let Jewish people in. And now we're seeing the same thing happen to Gazans and Palestinians. My people are Jewish people here tonight and others are saying that our government is not supporting them, but they are with our tax dollars. And that's why this is a local issue. Please vote for this resolution. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hello. My name is Wendy Greenfield. I'm a Jewish woman who has been living in grief. First, um, in October for the over 1,200 Israelis who suffered during that attack. And then the ongoing horrors that the people of Gaza have been undergoing with approximately 31,000 people, including 1,200, 12,000 children killed and over 72,000 wounded in a land where most of its medical facilities have been destroyed. A quarter of the population in Gaza is already facing starvation. Jewish tradition teaches that life is sacred and that to destroy one human life is tantamount to destroying an entire world. We all have the responsibility to speak out to stop genocide. Last month, the federal judge in Oakland stated he agreed with the international-
Your time is up. Thank you. It goes quick, doesn't it?
It does.
Michelle, how are we doing on time?
We're at the one hour mark.
Very good. We're now going to close the public comment. And we are going to now bring it back for council, uh, discussion and comments. Anyone want to start the conversation? No, not until we decide what we're going to do next. Uh, council member Martinez Beltman. Ladies and gentlemen, if you please, would please hold the comments down.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I, I want to say that I'm sorry to all of you. I mean, not stories. I'll go after my colleague.
Any comments?
This is a very, very complex, um, item before us. But I, I also reached out to many, um, people in our community. Um, and I, I found that I came away with a very different, uh, feeling about, whatever ceasefire resolution that was proposed. You know, one of the things I like, and excuse me for deviating, but I'm going to make a point. Uh, one of the things I like about Morgan Hill is the Fourth of July Parade. It brings everybody together. We are all one. We are all Americans. Our parade draws up over 30,000 people every year for close to 150 years. Okay, it unites us. It brings us together. Okay, it unites us. It brings us together. Morgan Hill is a town that tries to bring its people together by an event like that. What I saw here this evening was not bringing people together. It's very divisive. What I saw, it's not what I feel our community is all about. And I've lived in this community for thirty-nine years. So I'm very concerned about the direction. Again, I spoke to many different people and I met them because they reached out to me and wanted to talk to me. And I am absolutely convinced that a resolution, whether it's a ceasefire or peace or whatever, on this Middle East issue, this global issue, will not do anything to keep our citizens safe. In fact, it will be the opposite. And I was not elected to cross citizens in harm's way. I was not elected to look at issues outside of Morgan Hill. And Mayor, that's very distracting what I just saw.
Okay. I don't have any more of that. Number slip? All right.
And, you know, I listened to things like intimidation on the streets from our citizens. All members of the community need to feel safe. That was just some of the comments. Making a resolution on anything other than Morgan Hill and the purview of just Morgan Hill is again, is going to be very divisive to our community and incite much more hatred within our citizens. And we're going to go down a rabbit hole if we chose to go this way. And, you know, again, somebody mentioned the Sudan. What about, you know, the contaminated water in Africa? Or in other countries? Are we going to entertain every time we have a resolution? You know, somebody wants to bring something outside of our purview, which is Morgan Hill? Do we have to make a resolution about that? You know, I'm bringing forth, I believe it's at the next city council meeting, you know, some criteria by which we can choose this. So I'm hoping that we can have a good dialogue. But, you know, at this particular moment, especially after hearing the people and speaking with the people, this is a no-win situation relative to bringing any type of resolution proclamation relative to a ceasefire within our community. So I am totally opposed to anything like that.
Councilmember Martinez-Belfran?
Thank you for allowing me that. First of all, we're not discussing a ceasefire. There's nothing in the document that I submitted as part of my request, which is a document on peace. It is on peace. That's what it talks about. It talks about acknowledging suffering of the people of Israel and Palestine, which I see much of here. It talks about that there's a history of conflicts. It talks about the sorrow and condemnation for October seventh. Or all of the horrible things that happened on October seventh that nobody denies and everybody knows was a horrible tragedy. Just as what we're seeing now happening in Gaza is a horrible tragedy. It's all horrible. Nobody is winning here. So we are to just sit back and just let everybody mourn in pain and be upset and say horrible things. That's the solution. That is the solution. That's what I'm being told. I don't believe that. I believe that people are hurting. I believe that we can make a resolution on peace. We can have, I don't know what the answer is, but we can have a conversation with the community. Maybe we fly a white flag. I don't know what we do. Maybe we have a vigil. But I am calling on people who want to heal this community. This is my home. I don't have any other home. This is my home. And I'm watching all of you sit here and say these horrible things when we're not even talking about that. We're talking about a peace resolution. That's what we're talking about. Hours, I've spent hours. And the reason is because it was censored, quite frankly, respectfully, Mayor. It was censored. It was not allowed. So nobody knows what was written. I took it to the rabbis. I sat with them each for three hours and then more. I took it to the imam. I took it everywhere I knew and now somebody to help me. I haven't slept for over a day, thinking about people emailing me and calling me and texting me. So I'm at a loss. And if I have to lose today, that's fine. This is an agenda item. I will lose on the hill and that's perfectly fine. If everybody wants to continue to scream and yell and call each other names and we have a police department here. And I will not see here somebody who grew up, I have nowhere else to go. My family is here. This is your home. This is your home where you live and we shop together and we play together and and we celebrate together the Fourth of July. I mean, come on. I don't have any more words. I don't think we can come up with something. And I am calling on all the leaders to help. Why is this just on our desk? That's what I kept saying. Why is this on the desk of myself and my colleagues? There's everyone else.
What councilmember? Councilmember Spring?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you all for being here. And I am very sorry to see you like that. Ivan and I worked, tried to find a way. And we just could not find a way. And the reason is you out there. This is not the community I know of. You come in, you don't even want to talk to each other. It is heartbreaking. It is heartbreaking. The second one bears to state an opinion or so, so you get another opinion thrown at you from both sides. It does not matter who you talk to. When you meet an interfaith community or so, that community is a total letdown. I am sorry to say that. You don't talk to each other. If faith leaders can't talk to each other, what are we supposed to do here? You put us in an impossible position. I have to say that. I hear you. I feel you. And I've talked with many of you, several of you sit in the room and I talk to you. And I listen to you. I try to understand where you're coming from. It's heartbreaking, the stories you hear from both sides. It's heartbreaking. And it breaks my heart too, just as Ivan and others. I have had little sleep. I am drained emotionally because of what you're asking us to do, to decide on and how to do it. You are so mean to each other. This is not Morgan Hill. We don't do that in Morgan Hill. So knock it off. We need to find a way again to come together. I don't know the answer. Resolution is not the answer. No one wants to talk about the text in the resolution. Maybe those who tried, they really tried hard and we didn't get too far to find a resolution that everyone would agree to. It was very one-sided. I see the horrendous fighting between Hamas and Israel as well and the killing of innocent people on both sides. Hostages taken on October seventh need to be freed. There's no other way to get to a ceasefire. I don't see another way either. If you don't want to talk about that, then you just don't see how the other side feels.
Listen to me. Listen, ladies and gentlemen, when you did public comment, who didn't interrupt you and who didn't want you interrupting us?
Stop censoring. Stop.
You go ahead and make your point. Councilmember?
Thank you for letting me speak. I really was very respectful. I talked to so many of you and I listened and I respect all of you who met with me and you know that. War is never an answer. It doesn't matter where in the world it is. Whether it's in the Middle East, in Ukraine, Myanmar, the Congo, Afghanistan, Sudan, any other place where there is war, it's not the answer. Hate is never the answer. I am looking at, and there are some of you in the room here that are very respectful people and know each other. And I know you suffer because you cannot talk to each other anymore. So when you go home tonight, you need to reflect, why can't you talk to the other group anymore? What is wrong? What is wrong with you that you cannot do that in our community? This is Morgan Hill. This is not the Middle East. We can talk to each other. We don't always need to agree, but we talk to each other. And you need to get back to that mode again quickly. The issue before us is so tough and it's a no-win situation like I just mentioned it too. Your stories are like in my heart and they're so touching. I realize also that, you know, some say this is not a local issue. Yes, it is a local issue. Many of us move from another part of the world to Morgan Hill. And we have family members in different parts of the world. And we have friends that might be in Gaza or Israel and impacted or family members. That makes it local. When I see some of you suffer, it makes it local. And then you come to folks like us and look for a way to solve it. And we know we can't solve it. What situation are you putting us in? An impossible situation. So I started thinking, like Ivan, what else can we do? So what Mark and I started today, and I invite all of you to join, we call it Light the Candle for Peace. And there's a peace pole right outside here that many of you know. And we put two candles out, one for Mark and I. It says Hope for Peace. And I invite all of you to join us. Get a candle, put it out there, show your solidarity with Gaza, with Israel, whoever you want to. And your hope for peace, that's what, that combines us. That's what we all share, is the hope for peace. Quick peace so that all the suffering, hurt and pain will be gone again. We need to get over this. So work with me. Put the candle out at your home, your workplace, your school or here at the peace pole. Join me. Send a signal out. This is a much stronger signal than any words can express. Go there, pray, do whatever you feel comfortable. Bring a friend. Jewish meeting Muslim friends, Palestinians, meeting people from Israel. Why can't we do that? Why can't we do that? So join me in that project. And the other thing you can do, and Mark and I did that as well, you can donate. You can donate to organizations that help save children, that would help with the rebuild of the destroyed Gaza.
No comments. No comments, ma'am.
I'm not to talk.
Ma'am, who didn't interrupt you, you're not going to interrupt him.
Thank you. So I hope when you leave tonight, that you think about what other ways are there to come together? A resolution for me is not the way. I still don't know, am I going to vote against it or for it? But I don't think it's the solution. It's not the end of it. I need you to think. I need you to go home in peace, please. Thank you.
Councilmember Lebers?
All my colleagues I agree with at some level. And I have had over seven thousand emails and I'm not an exaggeration of that. Unfortunately, I couldn't answer all of those. But know that I read them and know that I feel your pain no matter where you stand on this. To you, it is real and it is right. But maybe to the person sitting next to you, it's not right. We as a city council are elected to take care of official business of the city. Our streets, our sewers, our trees, our parks, our kids, those kind of things. So putting this onto us, I agree with my colleagues, Councilmember Spring. This has been a tremendous burden and I too have been burdened for the last week over. How can we help you all get along? I don't know there is a solution and I certainly don't think having a proclamation or a peace announcement on paper from the city council will do any effect on the Middle East, what is going on right now. It might make some of you that are here feel better, but it's going to make some of you here not feel better. And I have friends, a lot of friends in the audience tonight, and I have talked to a lot of people individually. And I just am so heartbreaking, heartbroken over what the situation is in the Middle East. And unfortunately, I do not feel that any kind of written piece of paper is going to help or resolve this situation. This is the first I've heard of this piece around the peace monument, and I think it's a terrific idea. I will stand with all of you no matter what side you're on. You elected me to stand with you and I do. But I cannot support putting something down in paper, in writing, that will divide us even more. Please understand, I feel from the deepest part of my soul how very sorry I am for all of you, no matter what side you stand on.
Thank you, councilmember. There's no denying the fact that our community isn't indeed divided. This issue has divided the community. Like everybody at the dais here, I have spoken endlessly to people in the community. I've talked to people who have said, it's really not about a ceasefire because we know a ceasefire resolution will do nothing to end the war. Tonight, comments I'm hearing is we need a ceasefire to end the war. I think it's appropriate that President Biden is taking steps in order to facilitate a ceasefire agreement. That's his job. We're to be focused on local community issues. You are our community and we certainly have a heart for you. I have facilitated or have actually, I have officiated my funerals and I'd like to admit. I've stood at the side of graveside services trying to come up with words to speak to those who have lost loved ones and even to the parents of a two-day-old child. So I get it. Handing them a piece of paper with my signature on it mean nothing to them. What makes the difference is the fact that community members come together to talk more about their differences. Putting something on paper and calling it a ceasefire or a peace agreement is meaningless. And while some people say that reference Ukraine, if I was on the council at that time, I would have not voted for it because it's a foreign policy issue. And the one difference between Ukraine and what we face today is our community was totally united around that effort. One are a divided community over this issue. And I cannot see, based on what I've witnessed here tonight, if we sign a document that says we, whether it's a ceasefire or a peace agreement, that suddenly there will be happiness and hugs amongst all of you. I know that every race and religion is really represented here tonight and I know that everybody at least recognizes the person of Jesus. A prophet, a mere man or the Messiah, whether yet to come or to come again. Jesus said, "Out of the abundance of the heart, the mouth speaks." That set in for just a moment. What we heard tonight was a lot of hatred. The thing that actually probably most impressed upon me tonight was the first, one of the first gentlemen who got up and said, before all of this, we were neighbors. We were friends. We communicated. He said, "Now we're standing against one another." One signed piece of paper will change that. Only a change of heart will turn you back towards your neighbors and be friendly once again. The question I have for all of us tonight really, and I really, it's whether it's the faith community or interfaith community, is where do we go from here? If it's not going on to step three, if we end this conversation tonight, where do we go? If it's really about peace, we see the leaders of the pro ceasefire and the anti ceasefire groups come together and have a conversation. Would leaders be willing to sit down, five to seven of you, and say, okay, how do we now cause healing in our community? That's where I think we need to go with it. I'm like most everybody else up here. I cannot support a ceasefire or even a peace resolution. I don't think it's the way to go. And so to make it official, we now need to ask the question before us is this. Do we want to move forward to step three and have the staff go off and come back with examples and samples of resolution? come back with examples and samples of resolutions, peace agreements and all of those sorts of things? We're going to first find out, we're done talking. So you're saying yes, you'd like to see that?
I would like them to come back with some action that we could take. And I would like for that document to be available for the public to read.
You want to go to step three?
No, no, I want, Mayor, I want to state what I would like to do. Please, please.
We are not voting. This is simply.
Okay, and what I'm saying, it's not. No, we have just been here for hours. It is not, do you want to go to step three or do you not want to go to?
No, that is the question before us at this moment.
Three, I think that all of what we've heard, why don't we try and find something that we can do? I've made a statement, a sustainable piece. I've made my public statement on that. That's fine. I support that. I would like for us to have a discussion about what we can do.
Yes, that would be at a, at a future council meeting.
Yes, I think that would be a great idea.
Thank you. Councilmember Burjali. I, I still say no. Councilmember Libers.
May.
Councilmember Spring.
You know, I have friends in both groups. I come to conclusion, best thing for me is just to simply abstain.
And I also say no. So this is where it ends tonight. There will be no step three. This is over. Ladies and gentlemen, we so much appreciate you. I know it's been difficult. Thank you for your respect and for the difficult situation. We appreciate you being here. We are going to take a 15 minute break. All right, we're going to get this meeting back. If you are staying, please have a seat and enjoy the rest of the meeting. Otherwise, we will carry on. We're going to get to item number five, introducing ordinance amending various code provisions with Title 18 zoning out of the municipal code. This will sure just be a few minutes, I'm sure, huh?
Good evening. I'm Adam Scasi, Principal Planner with Development Services. So the item before you tonight is a zone amendment amended in various sections of the zoning code. And it's primarily to implement the six cycle, the housing element, as well as updates to provide consistency with chapter 15.62, updates to the shared parking provisions to comply with AB 894, as well as several, several minor amendments due to clerical errors and inconsistencies. The request before you tonight is to adopt an ordinance approving the amendments as recommended by the planning commission from last month. So there are a number of issues. I'll briefly summarize them and get through this presentation. So this table shows the residential detached zone districts, the proposed changes within that table. Within here, within our other zoning districts, we have group housing and residential care facilities. Those are two existing land uses that we have within our zoning code. However, as part of this update, as part of the housing element implementation, we are amending those definitions to match state law. We have a number of action items on the below, at the bottom of each of these slides, for how each of these changes pertain to the housing element. And so for group housing, we're required pursuant to the HCD. And our housing element is to allow that use as a permitted use within all of our residential zoning districts, where residential uses are allowed. Residential care facilities, our current definition includes supportive housing and transitional housing. We're looking to uncouple those definitions for residential care facilities. This way, we can still require conditional use permit for residential care facilities throughout our zoning ordinance. However, pursuant to state law, we are required to allow supportive housing and transitional housing as permitted uses wherever we allow residential uses. On this next slide, I have the residential attached zone districts proposed changes, which reflects pretty much the same changes on the previous slide. However, we also have shared living residences. Shared living residences is the same definition that we have for group housing today. So by uncoupling that use from group housing, we can continue to allow dormitories, room and boardroom houses, single occupancy rentals as conditional uses within our zoning code. This table shows the proposed changes to our mixed use zoning districts. Again, it's the same proposed changes for group housing, shared living residences, supportive housing and transitional housing. For emergency shelters, we are required to allow that as a permitted use where and within at least one zoning district where we allow residential uses. So currently we allow emergency shelters as a conditional use within the MUF zoning district. So therefore, we're proposing change that to a permitted use to be consistent with state law. And then for low barrier navigation centers, we are required by state law to allow that as a permitted use within our mixed use zoning districts. So these next several slides, I have the definitions for all these uses. And these are to be consistent with state law. So group housing is basically a residential care facility that's not required to be licensed. And then a residential care facility is a state licensed facility. Supportive housing is a residential structure for low incomes who have one or more disabilities. For persons with low incomes who have more, one or more disabilities. And then transitional housing is a residential structure as a, operated as a rental housing development that has certain program requirements. And these definitions are vetted from state law. It was just a clarification or a show the proposed change to shared living residences, which matches our current definition for group housing. And for emergency shelters, it's a proposed change to that definition to match state law as well. Then here I have the definition for low barrier navigation centers, which is a housing first and rich shelter, which has low barriers, which means that they can allow someone who meets this definition to have their partner, their pet, or even space for the storage of their possessions and privacy. Here's the proposed changes to the open space zone district. AB 101 requires that we allow agricultural labor accommodations as a permanent use in at least one zoning district. So we currently allow as a conditional use within the open space zoning district. And so we will allow that as a permitted use. The changes on this slide and the next slide is not pertaining to our housing element. We've come to have issues with this past year with proposals for residences to remodel or expand their decks that are on an upper story. And so we have zoning district or we have different setbacks for decks versus upper story porches. And so our proposal for table 18.44 dash two, to have this only pertain to detached decks where the front setback will be the same as the primary structure. Where this comes into play is that we are looking to have attached decks treated as the same as upper story porches and balconies. And we are looking to have that placed in table 18.56 dash two. This way, we permit them all the same way, that they all have the same type of setback, which is a five foot maximum projection into their required setback. And then we also look into amend the definitions for balcony deck and porch to more clearly define them. Basically, what this is saying is that we are looking to have upper story porches, some balconies be treated the same and not have different setbacks based on how they are defined. Because they all serve the same purpose. The next couple of slides is regarding parking requirements. So we had a number of policies or programs actually within our housing element. Identified how, or how we need to require parking based on state law or the requirements from HCD. So studio one bedroom is changed as uncovered parking space per unit. We identified for shared living residences, supportive housing and transitional housing to allow or to require one parking space per bedroom. State law requires us to amend the requirements for parking for emergency shelters. And then for low barrier navigation centers, that's to match the same requirements as emergency shelters. And then while looking at parking requirements, we identified that we didn't have parking records for outdoor vehicle storage. So we also identified requirements for that parking requirements as well. And then as part of the our housing element, it was also identified that we need to change the number of guest parking spaces for multifamily dwellings to match the single family dwellings of one per four units. This slide mentions other miscellaneous changes to our zoning code. It does not relate to the housing element. And also to remove requirements to the electrical vehicle charging stations and to refer to chapter 13.62. And then also to amend our shared parking ordinance to be consistent with AB 894. Chapter 18.84 is our says for dwelling unit chapter. And this is to clarify this chapter, consistent with state law. Single family dwellings are allowed a total of three ADUs per property. That proposed multifamily dwellings are allowed to detach ADUs. And to also clarify that existing multifamily dwellings are allowed to detach ADUs for up to 25% of the existing family dwellings units on the site within the building. And then also to clarify that detached ADU may be combined with a junior ADU. And then lastly, on my final slide, a reasonable accommodations ordinance is required pursuant to our housing element to remove that the potential impacts on surrounding uses, which helps determine if it's a factor for approval or denial, that that gets strike from our ordinance code. And then finally, for land use definitions, we also add a definition for outdoor vehicle storage. Because we also identified with that parking requirement that a clear definition was not provided. So that concludes my presentation. I return back to you, Mayor, and to the council for any questions that you may have.
Thank you. I don't know, everybody else who was, after what we just went through.
Well, I did read all that.
I was going to say, it's almost like you were speaking a foreign language at this point, but thank you for your presentation. Any, any now for questions? Councilmember Spring, please go right ahead.
Yeah, I'll, I'll try. See, my brain is not quite there anymore. Yeah, so I, I assume the planning commission, they, they job well, I trust them. But I, I have a question related to, to electric vehicle charger. And, and, and we just got an electric vehicle this weekend. And what I know is even like the charging station we have down here, that's not a fast one. There's much faster ones. So when you refer to EV charger infrastructure, does it, for multi-family homes, I think that's, that's where it's going to be required. Does that imply the fastest charging, I don't know what the right term is, EV charger? Because if they put in those slow ones, that's not going to solve anything.
Yep. So the change proposed tonight is just to refer from the zoning code to chapter 15.62, which was brought a couple of years ago by our environmental services division. I'm not as familiar with that chapter, about the requirements, but it goes above and beyond the building code on what needs to be provided and what type of conduits needs to be provided. But it's something that would be required at building permit stage. And I'm not just, I'm not as familiar with that code.
Okay, if you're not familiar, then it works with me. I'm definitely not familiar with what's in there.
But we're happy to check into those requirements in that section and we'll pass that information back through.
Yeah, I don't know if it has to be part of a motion or something. I, I think we need to be specific what we're asking for. We get the latest, yes, latest.
The reason that they can't give you a simple answer is that it's a, what, what's required depends on what's available and what's, what's needed. And so it's, it's not going to be a one size fits all. They're going to.
Right, but, but we know what's available now in 2024. So, so maybe a few years when that was created, it was just too generic. But if you put in those slow charger, that's not going to help anyone.
And again, it's a, it's a, it's a, it's not a one size fits all. So it's development by development. If you've got 100 parking spaces and you need, and you've got lots of people with cars, they're going to need the higher, higher level of charger. The other thing that we have to be careful of is that if it becomes too expensive, so like the super fast chargers are, are prices coming down, but right now they're expensive. And so if we just require those, then developers are just going to ask for a way to avoid building them. So we want to incentivize them to provide the best possible option that meets the needs of the development.
And for the purposes of this agenda item, we're just removing the conflicting language from this part of the zoning code and referring back to that chapter. But I'm happy to work with Chris's team to give, bring back some kind of more detailed.
Do I have to request that as a future agenda item or?
No, we'll bring you back.
And I did read the document. There was also made a reference to this, to the EV charger, but it was so generic, right? And I think we know more about how to do it now.
We'll, we'll bring back what the code states. And then if you think it requires additional discussion, then you can ask for an item, but we'll provide you with.
That's good enough for me. And it was up there last year, so it's not, it's not too far.
I don't remember. Today, I don't remember anything. So and the other thing that caught my interest was the definition of balcony. The, I think it was in a slide, if I recall it too, because at least my understanding of balcony, and maybe it's just because English is not my first language, but some of the balconies I know of are covered, they're enclosed, and it's still a balcony.
Yeah, so based on our definitions, if it's covered, we would, and even if it doesn't have stairs or any type of outdoor access to it, or our definitions, we would consider that a porch, but we would consider.
A porch on the, I'm sorry, a porch on the third floor?
Yes. So we would consider an upper story porch.
Okay, I think my English is better than that. So I, I don't think that is the right definition of porch.
But we did a, a normal amount of research into this. And the planning team went around in circles with balconies, decks and porches for a matter of weeks about trying to clarify how it should read and going from architectural standards as well.
Okay, note to myself, studying forches. Yeah, it just caught my interest because this, this, the way you described this, I, I think balconies include more than what, what is described. It's a minor thing, but yeah, those are my only two questions. I, it was so detailed. I think that's, it's really cleaning up the code, right? And so not much more to it, bless you.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Burjali.
With you, Mayor. Just two quick questions. So this is part of upgrading relative to wording with the Senate bills also, performing to the Senate bills, correct?
Correct. It's to be considered with the Senate bills, which we also reference within our housing element.
Okay, thank you. And the, the ADU units, I, I was just total, totally shocked. I didn't realize a single family dwelling are allowed three ADUs. Was that a recent change? I just wasn't aware of, they were allowed for three.
It's, it's not a recent change. Well, it's recent within the past couple of years. It's not recent as in this past six months. And so we're just looking to clarify, make it very straightforward that single families are allowed one detach, one attach and one junior ADU. And that's also from the direction from HCD.
And these are the minimum standards. Some cities have adopted ordinances that allow even more. I believe Cupertino just passed a law that allows three regular ADUs plus a junior ADU. We were on a phone call with them today. We're talking about the issue.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Councilmember Martinez-Beltran.
I just wanted to confirm. I know that SBC was going to reach out to staff. Have they done that on the, on the EV chargers? Or maybe I, I don't remember if I sent that. I think I sent that. Yes, okay, they have reached out.
Thank you, Councilmember. Anyone else? Are you done? I'm sorry. Councilmember Libers?
No.
Okay. We're going to open it to public comment. Do you have any public comments on this item?
No.
Very good. We are going to then close public comment. And since there will be no further discussion, is there a motion? Motion to approve by Councilmember Burjali, second by Councilmember Libers. We are going to, would you read the title and call the roll?
No, no, that's not it. So we need to vote on the motion to wait for the second reading. we need to, we need to vote on the motion to waive the first and second reading.
Oh, I'm sorry. I've, I've gone right to number, okay. This is for number one to open and close or to waive at the first and second reading. All, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? There being none. Now, we have an a motion for item three, introduce the ordinance amendment. Motion approved by Councilmember Borjoli, seconded by Councilmember Spring. Now, would you read the title and call the roll?
An ordinance of the city of Morgan Hill amending various code provisions within Title eighteen zoning of the municipal code. The city of Morgan Hill implementing the city of Morgan Hill twenty twenty three to twenty thirty one housing element. Updates to electric vehicle charging provisions to provide consistency with chapter fifteen point six two. Electric vehicle charging infrastructure, updates to parking provisions to comply with the assembly bill eight ninety four and implementing minor amendments due to clerical errors and inconsistencies. Mayor Turner?
Yes.
Councilmember Spring?
Yes.
Levers?
Yes.
Borjoli?
Yes.
And Martinez Beltran?
Yes.
Very good. Thank you so much. We're going to move on to item number six, adopt and amend resolution for exception of the one hundred and eighty day waiting period to hire retired and new tenant Andrew Crabtree.
Are you going to sing?
I, I can. So we want to do today. Good evening, Mayor and Council. My teammates, Michael, the human resources director. I'm here to present or request the adoption of an amendment to the resolution for exception to the one hundred and eighty day waiting period to hire Andrew, or hire retired and new to Andrew Crabtree to serve in a temporary extra help. The reason why this is coming back is under further review, upon further review from Calpers, they are requesting that we rectify some provisions within the amendment. One being that the assignment be to a specific position. So with that being said, we have assigned this position as extra help to the development services director. And also that this assignment may not receive any additional benefits. So as stated previously, this position was receiving PAR's contribution, but that has now been removed. And so with these changes, I request your approval.
Yeah, thank you. Any questions by the council? Councilmember Spring?
But this is just, we, we do, because there was this, this error in the text.
Yes, so we just needed to rectify the position being more specific in what his assignment would be. And we view removing any additional benefits that were stated in his offer letter as an attachment.
Okay, and that's the last time you come back.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'll give the case well open for public comment. Any public comments on this item?
No public comment.
And we then will close the public comments. And since there's no further discussion, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion.
I've got a motion by Councilmember Borjoli, seconded by Councilmember Spring. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? There being none, that passes. We'll go to item number seven, adopt a resolution of intention and introduce of ordinance to amend the contract between the Board of Administration and the California Public Employees Retirement System.
Yes, that's me. You again. Yeah, that's okay. Twice. So today, we again adopting a resolution to amend the contract between Calpers as discussed and agreed to during the union process or negotiation process. We agreed to amend our Calpers contact or miscellaneous section to allow service credit to be purchased for our service credit to be allowed for prior military service prior to them being here at the city. And so this is the first wave of coming through to get approval. And I'll be coming back later at another additional meeting for final approval.
Very good. Thank you. Any questions by the council? There being none, we'll open for public comment. Any public comment? There being none, we'll close the public comments. And again, no discussion by the council on item one, adopt a resolution of intention of the city council. So item one, seven point one, I'll look for a motion.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Borjoli, seconded by Councilmember Spring. All in favor?
Aye.
That passes. Item number two, waive the first and second reading of the ordinance.
So moved.
Moved by Councilmember Spring, seconded by Councilmember Levers. All in favor? No, I'm sorry, forgive me. Who's that? I'm sorry, Councilmember Martinez Beltran. It's through your voice and it caught me off guard. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? None. That passes. And now for item three, introduce the ordinance by title. Looking for a motion?
Motion.
Moved by Councilmember Spring, seconded by Councilmember Borja. I feel like I'm doing an auction here. And, thank you. So with that, would you read the title and call the rule?
Yes, an ordinance of the city of Morgan Hill authorizing an amendment to the contract between the city of Morgan Hill and the Board of Administration of the California Public Employees Retirement System. Mayor Turner?
Yes.
Councilmember Spring?
Yes.
Levers?
Yes.
Borjoli?
Yes.
And Martinez Beltran?
Yeah.
Very good. Thank you. That passes. That takes us, item eight, we've already dealt with. And now for future council initiated agenda items. Is there anything anyone wants to bring forward? Councilmember Martinez Beltran?
Yes, I would like to bring forward policy nine seven dash zero one, section four point two. I wrote up the future initiated agenda item that we heard about tonight. And it says here in our policy that the council member making the request will send the city manager a brief summary outlining the request and any relevant background. I read it. I wrote it. I sent it. A brief summary outline and included relevant background such as the document on sustainable peace. I requested that we were able to discuss that item as a future agenda item and take some action on it. And in order for you all to have sufficient information, I think it was a unreasonable request to have a discussion as we saw, everybody talking about ceasefire didn't even have a document to reference what we would be discussing. I was informed of this late Friday afternoon. Minutes before the agenda was released, I asked you to think how you would feel as a council member and learned at the direction of the mayor that my full request, including the community peace document or sustainable peace document was not allowed to be published on this agenda and therefore was censored. So only a one sentence handpicked excerpt was allowed in the item description and over half of my request was withheld from being supplemented into our agenda. Including that sustainable peace document that council was being asked to and requested to vote on whether to discuss. And all relevant background. Which was a total of documents. So the mayor asserts that we're not to do research. I think that this is a violation of the policy. I have the policy here and.
So your request is?
And that is my request that we review, as I stated from the beginning, that we review policy nine seven oh one, which says council member making the request will send the city manager a brief summary outlining the request and any relevant background.
Okay, so you will write up the summary, you'll write the summary and you'll submit.
I'm not done. I would like to talk about that. And I would also like to talk about the ability for you to interpret and change our policies without the council's approval. This policy was made by, by council of five people, not just you, Mayor. And I think that this is very important. And I think we need to discuss how there's a policy for when we have items that we're asked to act upon. And if you don't know that, that's fine. And so we have a policy that when we cannot get the council together to talk about those items that were asked on, that the mayor has direction, if it falls within our priorities, to go ahead and take that authority. This is not something that you have the authority to take away from the council.
You will write up a brief summary.
Absolutely. You know why? Because it's the policy.
Exactly. And I'm glad to see that you will follow the policy.
I always follow the policy.
All time.
I did.
Okay, so.
And I hope you'll learn how to make policy, man.
Anybody else looking to a future agenda item?
Yes, that's future agenda and not right away. Okay, I would like to have a policy similar to what San Jose has that they will not partake in decisions of international.
Borjoli has already introduced that.
Oh, I didn't know that. Okay, I'm sorry.
No, that's all.
I didn't know.
A little accountability is fine, not a problem.
No.
Oh, okay. I, I didn't read the San Jose thing till this time. We need that, yeah.
Anything for a future agenda? And nor do I. We are now going to move to a closed session. So welcome. Will you please read the closed session into the record?
Thank you, Mayor. The council will be entering the closed session on one item, conference of legal counsel existing litigation in their government code, section five four nine five six point nine. The case is CERN, which is the city of Morgan Hill, Santa Clara County, case number twenty three, C B four zero nine four three zero.
Thank you. Is there any public comment on this item? No public comment. We're going to now adjourn to closed session. We're going to start the closed session promptly in five minutes.